Let's pray. Father, we come to this one and give you thanks for all the ways that you blessed us. Mark to numerous commissioners and all. Father, thank you for your love for us. Ask and pray now, Father, where your guidance have we doing today discussing today? And later today with this board meeting. As far as you'd be left to ask, we wish to mention these assistance of our community and our county. Bless us always, whichever we accomplish today, we give you the honor and praise and the glory for it. Amen.
Amen. Our present citizens, we do like another United States of America and we're a republic of what we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with no end at all.
Now, are we voting this morning? We're not voting this yet.
Ever.
Um, I don't know before the board to continue their strategic plan to second from January the seventeenth, May nineteenth, for fifty years, eighteen and nineteen, this is the first year. And first thing on our agenda this morning is the vehicles lease presentation from Capital Leasing.
Um, we have Mr. Thornton Davis here from Capital Leasing, um, and he did have a packet and the antithesis, um, for Capital Trust Incorporated, I think is the name of the company. Uh, Mr. Davis, can you come forward? We also have Hank Evans and we have Gary Womel here. In addition to the packet from Capital, there is a heavy equipment truck inventory for both solid waste and public work. Um, we would like you to just take note of the mileage on these, on these vehicles and that's really what's driving this conversation. Um, so, if y'all want to say anything before Mr. Davis starts?
Just say something about how it works.
Yes, sir. And then I would like to, if you could also, um, inform the board of any of the surrounding counties that utilize your program, whether, um, it's for the entire fleet or just, uh, you know, the number of trucks that they leave, certainly helpful to.
Well, good morning, everybody. My name is Thornton Davis. I'm with Capital Trucks Incorporated. We're the Mac and Keen of dealers for, uh, for your area in South Hackett, where we're based out of. Uh, I had the pleasure of coming over a few weeks ago and, and speaking with Mr. Wong in the area and things about. The leasing purchasing programs we offer for municipalities, uh, currently, we're doing this with nine different counties. Some of your neighbors, uh, Madison County, Jefferson County, Leon County, Waukega County, uh, uh, Jackson County, Liberty County, Calvin County, Lollie County, Franklin County. I mean, I, there's so many of them, it's hard for me to name every one of them. But what, what the program really does is very rarely in our industry do you have a, what we call a win-win situation? Well, this is truly a win-win situation, not only for Taylor County, but for Capital Trucking West. In the private sector, these trucks are getting more, and even the public sector, but especially in the private sector, these, these trucks such as dump trucks, roll-off trucks, the big hundred and fifty and hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar trucks are hitting dramatically more expensive every year. Because of regulations, EPA, engine, all these other factors, prices of steel. There's so many factors and variables that are increasing the prices on these trucks to where attention every penny you can, starting to really, really, really matter. Uh, I remember ten, fifteen years ago, you could buy one of these dump trucks for ninety thousand dollars to count it. And now they're a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, there's, there's a lot of factors there, but, but at the end of the day, what comes down to is making dollars makes sense. And what we're able to do, uh, I can't control the hundred and fifty thousand dollar bar. But what I can control is your, your expenditures over a yearly, you know, a budget. I can help you with your, with your budget from the standpoint that you can look at what you're putting out every year for every five years, or every ten years, and what you're getting back for that. And what we've started doing, we've, we've been doing this for over ten years, but it hasn't been such a win for the counties because on a ninety thousand dollar truck, the money wasn't that, that crucial. Now it's becoming very crucial when we're talking about almost double that. For example, in Hank's area on dump trucks, dump trucks a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is, and I'm just going to throw a name out there, Mr. Murphy Trucking Company wanted to, if you wanted to just start your own private dump truck company and you were going to call me and say, Tony, what's one of dump trucks for the county that's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars? What's that going to cost me? If I'm going to start my own, you're going to pay a hundred and eighty thousand dollars because you have federal excise tax and state and local taxes that you have to pay on top of that one business. You, as the county, don't have to pay that. You have such a benefit there. Well, what we've done is we've learned a way, a system to not only capitalize on the thirty thousand dollar savings that the county really gets because of the taxes, but we found a way to spread that into the, pop into the private sector. Uh, I can take that hundred and fifty thousand dollar dump truck that Hank's going to drive and that the county's going to use. Let you guys run that truck on a one-year guaranteed buyback, guaranteed being the key word. I'm giving you in writing, documentation, stamp sign delivered, that we're going to buy that truck back from you in thirteen months. The reason it's got to be thirteen months is federal excise tax on that truck is exempt three hundred and sixty-six days after you take possession of it. That federal excise tax is twelve percent on that one business. For example, y'all get it for one business, he has to pay one eighty for it, a heavy truck. Well, what I'm going to tell him is you all go on one year. I'm going, uh, Taylor County's going to run this truck, they're going to put fifty, forty, thirty, sixty, however many thousand miles on it. But they'll run that truck, I've limited you, uh, I've given a letter to you guys explaining, you know, trade terms and, and things of that matter. I've never, A, had to limit a county on mileage, I've never put a blessing out there on mileage. The worst I've ever seen a truck come back to me is forty-eight thousand miles. If you're putting more than forty-eight thousand miles on a truck in one year, you're getting with it and I commend you. But I just ain't seen it happen yet. Most of the trucks I get back, Madison, uh, Jefferson, Jefferson's probably the highest mileage truck in our program for offering. Most of the trucks come back in the twenty to thirty thousand mile range. I could take a thirty, forty thousand dollar truck, offer it to him, still remaining a warranty on it. It's got two years worth of warranty left still on it. Another, I'll come back to that in a minute, Chris, the entire time you're in this program, you cut maintenance out because you're under warranty the entire time you're in this program. He can buy that truck thirty something thousand dollars cheaper than he could buy a brand new one. And he's got a one-year, you're buying a one-year-old truck that saves you thirty something thousand dollars and Hank in his department has kept and serves representatives, maintenance representatives. So, I mean, raise your hand if you run a hit for thirty thousand dollars in your lifetime because I, I always drive thirty grand on it. He saves thirty, I've got all these other, you know, trucking companies in our region and territories that are gobbling these trucks up as fast as I can get. So, it's a great situation for them. When you're buying five, six, seven trucks, like Key B Incorporated and Crowder Incorporated, you're buying five, six, seven trucks and you save thirty grand every time you buy a truck. It don't take long to add up, they're buying eight trucks for what they could buy five and six new trucks for. So, they really enjoy the program, the counties really enjoy the program because, I mean, the savings under this program for you guys is five, six, sevenfold. I mean, there's, there's so many different positives about this program for you guys, but just the main ones that I always want to touch on. It's easy to budget, if you know how many trucks you're going to run, what you're trying to, you know, accomplish in a year, you know what you can budget for, and you can just about kick out maintenance. I mean, he, really, or not maintenance, but...
You know that we budgeted, yes. The last two years, two fifty years, I spent over eighty-five thousand dollars on all those repair maintenance.
Now, that doesn't act account equipment, that's strictly on load.
On load.
Now, Gary, how much did you, I asked you to get this number?
About forty-five to thirty-five the last couple of years. With our, with our mileage going up on these older trucks, it's going to get worse as we go because the one transmission, um, twelve...
All thousand, like, that's a lot, too.
Once you clear over five hundred and fifty, six hundred thousand, that last one, it's about...
The warranty on our trucks will cover you, well, considering that you're going to, under the proposal, you're going to trade every year and pay a difference. And under that difference, which is listed, it's a little different on the roll-off and dump, dump fifteen thousand dollars, a roll-off eighteen thousand dollars. If you pay eighteen thousand dollars a year for a hundred and seventy-something thousand dollar roll-off truck, uh, it comes out for right around, it's, I have a thousand dollars a month, eleven hundred, I think, maybe twelve hundred, that's per run, to run a hundred and seventy thousand dollar piece of equipment.
How, what's the mileage back to the roll-off truck, I'm saying, mileage wise?
Mileage wise, I would go out there, now, the engine, the transmission and all that, that's, I mean, five, six hundred thousand miles is not out of scope for that truck. But where you're running the problem on the roll-off truck is day in, day out, wear and tear usage on the body, the hydraulic cylinder hoses and things of that nature. Very rarely would you see a roll-off truck go up and down the road, yanking sixty thousand pound cans that last much longer than two years without having to have some pretty dramatic, you know, repairs and, when I say dramatic, tarp, tarp on them, things of that nature, that could cost anywhere from five to fifteen thousand dollars, you know. The engine, transmission, your major chassis components, or normally, you, you don't see a lot of problems there until about the fourth, fifth, sixth year. But to, you know, to weave into that, that's what makes the truck so desirable for that private sector guy on the back end and he can buy it one year into use, save himself thirty, forty thousand dollars and he knows he's got a good dependable truck for the next three or four years. It, it, where you got to be careful here as a municipality, or myself, or you, you know, an individual, is you got to find the happy medium in this program that allows you to win, us to win. We're winning at the one-year mark. The one-year mark, I, i- if I do it for two years, if I put a truck down here for, with you guys for two years, it doesn't quite make it as, just, thank you. You, you, you don't, it's hard for me to go get a hundred and thirty thousand dollars out of a second buyer on a truck that you guys have had for two years that only has one year warranty left on it, two years of wear and tear. One year has worked very well and you guys paying that eighteen thousand dollars a year. Eighteen thousand don't sound like a lot, I mean, it's, right now it does, but you start breaking it down over a ten-year span and you drive a truck for ten years, you put out a hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
But you...
But you have not spent one dime in maintenance or repairs because your truck's recovered on the warranty. That transmission goes out, guess what, you're off the hook. You don't owe me twenty-two thousand dollars, which is what it costs to replace a brand-new twenty-nineteen model transmission. Yes, ma'am. Excellent question.
You got somebody in the trucking business.
Nobody asks about tires, and that's a great question, because they're very expensive, very difficult. Set tire costs you roughly five grand, I think, would you say? I would say, because your front float tires are very expensive, but your back eight drive tires are, they're not cheap, but compared to... Five grand's normally what you're looking at on tires. What we have done in this program, and now, please, don't be afraid to ask questions or to interject anything because I'm learning too, okay? I've been doing this for on and off, close to ten years, but I'm learning something every time I do this. Every county is different, every customer, application is different, okay? I, 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 I'm not all-knowing about this. But what has worked well for us is we require seventy-five percent rubber and brake lining on the trade-in. Okay, seventy-five percent, who designed seventy-five percent? Well, that, you know, that, I, I can take a tire gauge and look at a, a tire and tell you if that truck, if that tire meets the criteria or not. I mean, I've had trade-in tires come in to me that were eighty-five percent. I don't say a word about those tires, they're in great shape. But then I bet where, where your guys might have run over some steel beams and cut two tires down and you got, you know, eight tires on the back, three of them don't match and there won't be jobs or whatever, you know. It, it's just, that doesn't constitute to me, or to that second buyer that's buying this quality truck for a hundred and sixty thousand instead of a hundred and ninety thousand, he, he's not going to be okay with that. So, what I have just, I, instead of dancing around the issue of tires, what I said, let's do, Hank's going to get, let's say, a brand-new dump truck from me, and this is just hypothetically, and put an example out there for you. Hank runs that truck twelve months and I've got your new truck over there, you're, you're in your twenty-nineteen now. I've got your twenty-twenty, it's come in, it's all light, shiny, pretty, ready to go. Hey Hank, why don't you send that truck over and let's do the swap-out? Because what I'm going to do, instead of nitpicking your tires and saying, well, I know there's three gears that aren't any good, two gears that aren't any good, I need you to buy me seven tires to make this right. Uh, taking that all out of the equation, what I'm doing, Hank, when you send your truck over to me, I'm going to take your trade-in tires, put them on your new truck. I'm going to take the new truck tires, put them on the trade-in, and then you monitor your tires. Because what happened the first couple of times we tried this, county sent a truck back to me, had sixty, fifty percent rubber on it. There was a lot of life left on it, maybe a year's worth. To make them buy five thousand dollars' worth of tires and then have two thousand, three thousand dollars' worth of tires get snatched off and just sit there, didn't make a lot of sense. You weren't getting full use out of the set of tires. So, what we do, we stay on twenty-two five, we just, you know, the same exact interchangeable tire size. Hank sends it, or Gary sends this truck over to me, we do a swap-around, I eat that, it cost me about fifteen hundred bucks to do that. But we mount balance, reseed everything and send him back with tires with whatever he sent me. Uh, I have yet to have a complaint from the counties that's doing this because what they found is after, you know, one year of use on their tires, they didn't like having to buy me, or meet the criteria of buying two or three or four or five brand-new tires. Hey, there ain't nothing wrong with these that we're running, we'll keep them. And then when they wear out, buy you good tires. You're buying tires as needed, not because I'm dictating that you had to buy a set of tires. Does that make any sense?
Mm-hmm.
This is a great question, Father. Would this be a good time to interrupt and ask a question?
You can ask any question you want for this hour, correct?
Well, I'm, I'm going to kind of get down to the nuts and bolts of this thing.
Okay.
Excuse the dump truck from that.
Mm-hmm.
You would provide us a brand-new dump truck, and enter into the side you're bringing it. And this would cost to this county a truck, for that truck, would be fifteen thousand?
Depends on which way you go. You can, you could buy the truck from me and pay the hundred and fifty thousand.
We don't want to do that, I mean, that's not what I'm looking to talk about today. I, I think it's concerning, right? It would be fifteen thousand a truck.
Fifteen thousand a truck, correct.
And we would keep that truck for twelve and a half to thirteen months?
Correct.
All right, now, in addition to fifteen thousand, are we paying another thousand a month?
No, sir, no, sir.
The fifteen thousand...
Fifteen thousand is your initial, yeah, that's your yearly fee for the truck.
So, Hank can run that truck all year, under warranty, fifteen thousand. What's getting blew out on one of the tires?
You're assuming responsibility for replacing your tires?
We would.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, that's a little more than a thousand dollars per month?
Very little more, yes, sir.
Very little bit more?
Yes.
Probably, if you bought it, all right.
Thirty-five hundred dollars a month, pay it.
Thirty-five hundred dollars a month. At the end of the one year, you come take the truck back and you're going to have that nice shining view and you replace it with it.
Just from the swap tires. Yes, fifteen thousand dollars.
And...
Every year.
Are there any other cap, if overall, if this, is my understanding correct, how this thing works?
Yes.
And the dump trucks you have?
Well...
We need to do it all by over the one year?
No, sir, and I think the longer we discuss this, maybe get a couple can describe this program before we get off in a whole lot.
Because you have to remember, you know, at the end, if you just wrote the name down and you replaced your entire fleet with these fleet vehicles, at the end of five years, you don't have any vehicles. And if that's the way the board wants to go, that's fine, you have to keep that in mind, it's, you know, and I don't know what other counties do, but if we, you know, ease into it with, you know, how many trucks the decision is, then, then that gives us some experience with the program.
And we gain experience, and you have another truck where the, I'm going to add certain.
I've got a printout.
Y'all have that in the...
They've got the truck, year model, the model zone, but that's a huge limitation.
We can take your, if you've got a nineteen ninety-six model with four million miles on it and it barely gets down the road, I can take that truck for you. Uh, we're partnered...
Fifteen thousand a month?
Sorry? We're, we're partnered, uh, with a company based out of South Hackett called Big Truck Biz. They run online auctions. We'll handle that for you. I mean, I, it, we, we can put your trucks in the auctions, any of the trucks that you want. I know a lot of municipalities are required, or at least have voted to make it mandatory to auction their equipment rather than trade. So, they guarantee, you know, that they're getting fair and equal treatment. And we're all for that because, I mean, at the end of the day, I'm, I'm here to serve you guys. And I'm, whatever I can do to help y'all, the benefit is what I'm here to do. Uh, your understanding, sir, is following that fifteen thousand dollars a year is what you're going to pay? You pay that up for them?
Right, the roll-off trucks, Gary, you...
Yes, sir.
You know, fifteen thousand?
Eighteen.
That's what?
It's eighteen.
Eighteen, because it's more expensive, so...
Yes.
And Gary, you can probably use, meaning we can afford to get.
We've got, we've got, we've got three that, if we could get three, I've got one that doesn't have a lot of mileage. We've got, we need four to run for the county. And fair, we got a old International that we use, but it's limited because it doesn't have a ton of speed.
And that's gone with million mile haul.
It's got a million mile haul.
Oh, a million miles.
The other one that I went down the other day, I think it, motor transmission, I think it had one, it was four mill on it.
So, you need four trucks or three trucks?
We do need four, we can get four and keep that one we have as a spare, so if we need to get for some... Like Hank sometimes needs a truck and use and stuff like that, we usually get four.
And you have not spent any of your budgeted funding for, we budgeted to replace one roll-off truck this year, you have not spent that?
A hundred and eighty, I think, we wanted it.
So, we can take three, we can get three trucks out of one hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Fifteen thousand dollars a week, eighteen thousand dollars a week.
Hundred and eighty thousand, then just do it.
More than sixty-four, we take sixty-four thousand dollars out of his budget and get four new roll-off trucks for one year.
Yes, sir.
That's got my thing.
Now, that's one set of money that we have established that we can utilize one set of money for leasing.
And you would, you, you, you would just budget for that every year? You would just say, okay, I've got sixty-four thousand dollars every year, and every year you're going to spend that sixty-four thousand dollars? But you're also not going to spend that thirty thousand dollars you're talking about in maintenance. Well, not maintenance, but repairs, I mean, maintenance is a small, I mean, maintenance program on a truck.
It's a lot of dollars to replace the oil and...
Yes.
And we'll still have our, now, I'm assuming we'll still have to pay our liability insurance rate?
Yes, you will. We still have to pay for all the tanks.
And insurance and...
That's, that's maintenance. The service records and the recommended service intervals on these trucks is thirty thousand miles.
And if we...
And you'll do one of them.
Right, these trucks were, you know, there's a penalty for that, for damage to the truck.
Well, that, now, thank you, ma'am. I've only had one, and I'm sure there'll be fifty in the next ten years, but I've only had one truck damaged during this process. I had a Jefferson, or Jefferson County had a D C A tractor, they actually do a D C A tractor. It got laid over on the side and had twenty-seven thousand dollar damage to it. Okay. The problem I have there, and it's just like if any of you want to go buy a car or pick up truck at the Chevrolet or Ford store, if you knew the truck had extensive damage, you would shy away from buying it. I mean, it's just called hard to deal with. Yes.
Bring less money.
I, I wrote in here at the very bottom, and again, I'm not all-knowing, I'm not perfect, I, I, I don't, I, I mean, I'm trying to work with issues that come up, as they come up, and trying to come up with answers. Uh, any wrecked truck that requires more than twenty-five thousand dollars in repairs is subject to a depreciation adjustment of a minimum of ten thousand dollars. If you did forty thousand dollars worth of damage to one of these roll-off trucks, the insurance company is the key factor here. Are they going to deem it a total loss, or are they going to deem it fixable? If they deem it repairable and they repair it, instead of trading with you for eighteen thousand dollars the next year on a significantly damaged vehicle, you would pay a ten thousand dollars, up to ten thousand dollars a week. And I, I, I don't like that, I don't want to do that, I'm hoping, fingers crossed, that that never happens. But we have to protect or guard ourselves, the capital truck against that. And again, I'm not, I mean, I'm not saying that it's going to be ten thousand dollars. I'm just telling you that I, I have to cover myself there.
Yeah.
And, and I hope you would understand that.
Well, ten thousand is the maximum, maximum?
Because, and the reason I'm calculating it as ten thousand dollars is because if there's a sixty thousand, seventy thousand dollar damage to that truck, nine times out of ten, insurance company will write truck off totally and any need of one of us have to worry about it. But if it's a forty thousand, thirty thousand dollar issue, ten thousand dollars is enough depreciation on that truck to help me, you know, get rid of it and move it.
And you'll have to repair it and ask our insurance company to pay.
Yeah, well, I, I'll tell you what, what I'd like to have from you two is I would like to see a cost comparison. I'd like to look at the last, say, five years, what have you paid for repairs? And compare that with the eighteen and fifteen thousand a year, so that when, when my constituents or anybody else asks me, they go, oh, well, to all of us right now, it sounds like a really good deal, okay? And you, nobody can deny that, but, um, I have to answer to my constituents. And so, I want to be able to say, yes, it's a good deal because we're going to save, just in the road department alone, we're going to save X amount of dollars.
Well, the last two years, I have spent eighty-five thousand dollars on repairs.
I'd just like to see for a five-year, you know, and that way, you know, I've got something concrete to tell people, it sounds great, but...
Also, we got something we need to look at too, is with my truck, I think Hank too, is the downtime that they're not in service. And two weeks, and in the last six months, I wouldn't be scared to say that I have two trucks down a day and I have to haul four of them one day now.
Well, then tell us what the impact of that being down meant to the county, meant to the systems, what did it mean? You know?
We have, you know, a lot coming on weekends and a little overtime trying to fix the truck, getting lotion, like, we...
No, sir, I can't, can't say this, but I'm about to.
Okay.
I, I, I compare, we need to, uh, because we have to just, uh, to see these, uh, but just what you can as far as what we've been on maintenance, and I think we, I think we have a pretty good understanding of the lease arrangements. Now, I'd like to, to put you on the spot now, Hank, the two trucks, you feel comfortable with leasing the two?
Yes, sir.
Or what you know?
I've got one that's a two thousand and fifteen model and two that's, uh, like a two thousand and eight.
And, and Gary, you need four?
I have a whole lot of it.
All right, would you give us enough time to let Wong check out with some of these other counties? How they, how we think it works for them? And my explanation at this time, until I look at gold data, is I'm in favor of this, for the two and the four, to get started with it. And after a year or two, if this doesn't work out, then we'll buy the truck. Then we'll buy the truck from.
Yes, sir. And, and what the, the, uh, leasing time, in other words, let's say y'all bang the gap over the day and said, get me six trucks. I want you to know, I have two trucks, dump trucks, sitting and faded out now, or right now, at the body company, that I could have prepared, ready, y'all be busting blows and hauling dirt with them in forty-five days if you made a decision that that. So I can have two dumps for Hank back at.
I've got a roll-off truck.
Roll-off trucks, in the next probably two to three months, I could have them all for you.
Now, Gary, I mean, you, I know that we're getting to the critical point with the roll-off trucks. We have many guys who did purchase one now, but do you feel like that we can, it's reasonable to limp along for another two to three months?
I think so, overall, with what we've been through, I think we're, I think we can, we have. Sent one over to the next train, it was over there for three weeks, and that's the Mac dealership over in Lake City, and they kinda went through that. One truck we were having a lot of issues with, the other one, you know, it's a day-to-day hose, it's like he's talking about. Engine wise and transmission, I think we can run them and have no problem like big expense. They just mentally diamond us to death, and awful, like say, the downtime killing them. You, you wake up and all your sites are full, and you got four trucks dead, wanting to run.
All right, now, eighteen, eighteen thousand, two hundred and four, is that seventy-two, oh, seventy-two thousand?
You was mad.
And you've already got budgets for one good truck.
Well, you're not really.
We've got the money to do your seventy-two thousand. Now, do you budget for trucks?
No, I'm not, not trucks.
Yeah, we, we can use that same, different, Gary won't be.
Two different times.
Two different funds, because his is M S T. I'm gonna take all the sales time.
Well, well, we can, I mean, we have.
We, we got funds.
Money in it, yeah.
We could buy a thousand, a thousand dollars.
No, we have, we have money in the ones that sell that, I think we have one point.
Well, Hank, you can get his out of the one that sells that.
Well, they're both good, yeah.
They're both good.
Yeah.
But, uh.
All right, let's get, let's let the law do, uh, do the research, you get back with it.
We swap it from.
Yeah, they're something like a situation today because I'm waiting on.
Waiting on that.
Okay, I don't know. Now, Gary, when, when you're down, the fire, off the range, how many employees have had a setback in, in the last, well, but you say they had all this downtime?
What happens is when it goes down, they usually, I got one mechanic, he'll help the mechanic try to work on the truck, or he'll go down and recycle it and work. And if, if it, if it's really extreme, he may not even come in that day or something, you know, it just depends. It, they show up to go to work, they can, the truck's gonna run. We've had multiple trucks break down in Slantville down there, so we stayed with the truck mechanic, get there, and they helped work on it to get it up and running.
But if you know that a, you know, rain on a park, it's gonna be X number of days or weeks to come in, and how can you, how do you work your, at people during that time?
Well, like, like with the flat truck for three weeks, that guy there, the truck driver, he came in, and we have a part-time guy, he makes a part-time job, get down to the recycle barn, because we were short of inmates for a whole year at that recycle barn. The lot, it, it's slammed full of car, cardboard, he may help with cardboard down there every day down there, that's what we did for the two weeks he was on. We just had it down at the recycle.
If you want.
I have a question, uh, Hank, there, y'all had a truck turn over on mine yet last year? What did that cost to fix it?
I think seventeen thousand.
Seventeen thousand, between fifteen and.
Yes, so that come in, that come in under.
Yeah.
That would come in under the.
Yes.
Guy of mine, four, you go, four, seven.
That February incident would have, yes, sir.
But we filed with our insurance company for the repairs and we received green.
Jefferson, Jefferson, that, that incident where their truck was damaged to the extent that it was, I mean, they did not pay ten thousand dollars. I didn't get them ten thousand dollars, I didn't for four thousand dollars. It actually, I, I'm, that was, the ten is a number of extreme, it's, thank you, I mean, because if, if it's, uh, because the customer that ended up coming in to look at the truck, I have to disclose that to him, I said, look, you know, they had this truck, and they ran it, and it's got twenty-three thousand miles on it, so they dumped a load of line rock and they laid it over on the side, damaged the door, damaged, we put a new hood on it, we put a blah, 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 and he's, oh, well, I can't even tell it. He said, well, what are you gonna do for me considering that it was damaged? I said, I'm gonna give you an extra five thousand dollars off the price of the truck, and he says, well, I'll pay it. Well, ended up Jefferson County only paid four thousand dollars to recuperate that thing, so it, it came out great, I, I, again, I, I mean, I know y'all gotta look after your county, and you should, and you've got to ask your questions, and you've got to watch out for them, you know, and I get that. But I can tell you, the other nine counties and the one that'll find this out as you keep moving through, calling and checking in with some of these people, this is a very good opportunity for you guys as a county, it's a very good opportunity for these gentlemen trying to run these departments with newer dependable equipment, and it's a super opportunity for me. And like I said at the very beginning, very rarely in our industry do you have win-win situations, and this is definitely a win-win situation.
That's right.
Yes.
I believe eight or nine counties that you use, that use your services now. The one that finished your program at the longest length of time, is, is it three years, two years, four years, five years?
Madison County's done this for on and off over twelve years.
Okay.
And.
How they are over there, most of you are working close to them.
Uh, Liberty, Liberty County's been doing this quite a while.
Thank you, buddy. They don't have any tax.
They don't have a tax, but only one thing about it, you've heard it?
Yeah.
And I mean, I think some counties, when they introduced themselves to this program, and they had the money to do it. I mean, often, for example, if you had a hundred and eighty thousand dollar budget for Gary, for a roll-off truck, they would buy the roll-off truck, I'm not gonna pay a hundred and eighty grand, buy the truck, and they own it, but in thirteen months, guess what they wanna do? They wanna swap it and get a new one for eighteen thousand dollars, and they're upgrading every year for eighteen thousand dollars. It's still, either way you cut it, getting a new truck every year and looking at your budget and saying, well, it's only costing me eleven hundred, twelve hundred dollars a month, or eighteen thousand dollars a year to run a brand-new, fully covered, fully warranted.
Not, no, you're right.
Well, another thing I learned too, is if it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars over a ten-year period, yeah, you would have paid a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a brand-new truck, but you still get the brand-new truck given you.
Yeah.
And that was a ten-year.
If you paid ten, if you paid now a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a brand-new truck and you run it for ten years, I'm, I mean, no, this is not a knock on you, Hank, I'm just, I mean, Hank ain't driving any trucks every day, y'all are hiring people and, uh, you know, I'm not gonna put my neck on the line that that truck in ten years, after fifteen different people, thirty different people have driven this truck, no telling how many miles, no telling how many dents, seams, fender benders and everything else, in ten years that a one hundred and fifty thousand dollar truck's gonna incur, you don't have a twenty thousand dollar truck that's gonna end up here.
I, I, that's been, that's called a pile makin'.
Of course, yeah, well, I, yeah, I mean.
I, 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 that, that is.
So you've net over ten years, put a hundred and twenty thousand dollars into it, but in the ten years, how many times have you had to do what he's talking about, with three weeks of downtime, getting this fixed, getting that fixed, replacing this, replacing that, just one engine, one transmission, it puts you over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, period. So trading every year fifteen thousand or eighteen thousand dollars respect, respectively, is, yes.
Looking at the mileage we got on these trucks, that fifteen thousand dollars is, is a real good price, oh, thank you, y'all, that's.
Yes.
One rent mission, you got enough mileage on forty trucks, rent mission, go out and test.
You can very well do it.
Very well could, you know, I'm not saying will, my last four more years, ten more, you could have one, I could have truck here, cost fifteen thousand dollars or something like that, you look at that, and you're like, oh, it's, it's, that much mileage, I'm gonna keep running it another few years, which sounds fun.
And keeping in mind, both of these trucks that I'm quoting will be automatic transmissions. Driver retention is somewhat better with an automatic transmission, I mean, you can hire, uh, you know, guys just fresh, fresh out of the dri, uh, driver university, and throw even a week behind the wheel of this thing, because automatic transmissions make it so much easier to keep and hire drivers, you know, they're, they're user-friendly.
I think that would make it.
Yeah, true, I, you know, it's about to come back. Tell me anything about.
Twenty, thirty, that's about how.
Thirty or thirty-five thousand, can I have a few?
It's a full of money, that's about the same price I'm saying, probably. He's a big guy.
On average.
Probably twenty-five thousand.
And this truck's gonna get off their gas, I'm gonna say.
So you don't have anybody here forty thousand, forty-eight thousand.
Well, I, I, I've got, one of my new trucks just lost, neither eighty-one thousand, just two years ago, but that's the one from the back porch.
Because that's the one everybody wanted to be in everything, so.
No, there's one person that I listen to. It goes by Paul exactly, they're gonna get their coal mix.
You leave them in the water, the private pit, most of them daddy just act, we can.
They turn right around and buy another, y'all have had it for one year?
If you don't lease them like you talk.
I don't lease them, that's very.
Why, why don't they do that?
Because they, they have to take the other left, okay?
That's a difference, that's, that's the difference, that's why I was on you, make a win-win out of this for us. Well, I talked about this all day, but I don't think that's.
I've got, I do have one, but.
I think a roll-off truck together. I'll tell you.
I've got three.
I got one, that's nine.
Nine, totally, yeah, I mean, nine.
Now, Mr. Davis, at the end of the day, this is a five-year contract.
It's a hundred-year contract if you want it to be, I, 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 the only stipulation I put in here is that if y'all, like I said, you bang the gap over the day, and we do it, we're going forward. I need six months' warning or notification that you're not going to reel up and do it begin the next year. And the only reason I need that six-month notification is that, guess what I gotta do six months before you get your new truck? I gotta start ordering, building, and planning, so if in March of twenty nineteen, y'all jump on board with four roll-off, two dump trucks, by April, May, June, July, August, September, by September, October, I'm reaching out to these two guys, or you, and saying, hey, are we good to go for twenty twenty?
So he can break that.
Break that anytime you want to, you shout me and say, hey, we decided we don't wanna do it. Uh, we just wanna, at the end of this year, we're gonna sell these trucks and we're gonna do our own thing.
I wanna thank you for being here today, it's been very informative and interesting. Um, we have a little bit of homework to do, and then, um, after we get that, and we talk to other, um, customers or peers, then we'll, we'll reconvene on, of circumstances, we'll let you know.
And if anything pops up, I might as well get three miles down the road, and y'all play Hank, should have, these guys have my number, uh, you're more than welcome to call me individually, personally, I don't care, I mean, I'm, I'm open three, six, five.
Is this something we're gonna have to bid on?
No, I can answer that.
We can piggyback.
You can piggyback off of the city of Tallahassee, we have an R S P, a continuing R S P that's good through twenty twenty-two. So the purchase price of the trucks, roll-off dump trucks, medium-duty trucks, we have an R S P that encompasses everything you could possibly want to buy from us.
Who competes with, if we have a company that does this?
Every truck dealer in the United States competes with it. It ain't tough for you.
That's what they do.
They won't go out and do what I'm doing, they won't, yes, they just haven't, nobody, no other manufacturer, Peterbilt, Kenworth, Freightliner, none of them are willing to put it out there that their trucks will bring back this much money like we are, and I have to be the industry leader in the professional side of our business.
But are we gonna, are we gonna have to get other companies to give us a bid on it just like him, or we not gonna have to?
We don't have to if we piggyback off an existing contract.
That's, that's a lot that's part, because we definitely need trucks, customers, but we don't have to do the bidding.
But, correct.
And for piggyback, that's a lot to go, I think.
So what I would do is, um, in conference with the board, I could send this to Conrad and also include a quest, if we need a copy of everything from the city.
You will need, you will need the copy of the contract with the city of Tallahassee, you will need a copy of, you'll actually get a, uh, now, now, I have the selling price and the, and the return purchase price of the truck, leasing too, is a sub, leasing company out of, based out of California, but their office is in Hamba, they handle your financing, and you are financing the truck under a lease contract for thirteen months. But at the end of the thirteen months, I buy your lease out, and I give you documentation, the capital truck is purchasing the truck from a thirteen-month period. Conrad will look through it, Conrad's gonna say, cross this line and drop this key, and then y'all will approve it, and then we move forward. So it's, it's relatively, relatively simple, but it's as simple as Conrad makes it.
Okay, and we got, so I was doing the same thing.
Thank y'all.
Yeah, thank y'all, thank, and don't hesitate to get any questions.
Okay, number two, road materials, thank you. This is just to answer just the second question that was brought up in the last three, two, three, twenty seconds about stop-hauling road materials, and Mr. Page did want to hear about some things.
Uh, Hank, remember when we had flooding and we had some roads with water running over, and you couldn't get all of those, what is that, number five?
Number five, I'm still tanking.
Still tanking, and what's all occurred to me is, at times when it's not flooding, what do you think about us stop-hauling with a number five?
If, if we can stop-haul, I, I don't have a roof on the yard.
You don't have any roof?
No, if we can stop-haul, it's maybe at the airport where we have that roof to stop-haul out there.
Yeah.
But your bucket, that number five rock, twenty-one dollars a ton.
So you know, that's a lot of water out there.
Yeah, my, my bucket can't handle that, I pay seven seventy-five a ton for line rock, and that number five rock's twenty-one dollars a ton.
So we use that turn?
We, yes, we use it as a turn. The only time we really do it is if we have a hole in the road, it's kind of, it's full of water, we put number five rock in and build up above water, then we cap off the line rock. Because you can't put line rock on the water, it just makes a mud bed.
So it was more than excuse this time here with all the flooding?
Yeah.
And, um, Hank, what is your line item budget for road materials, one sixty?
And I think the last couple of years, I've had to park my dump truck and set chemicals on that rock, and, uh, my bucket can't handle stop-hauling big bunch.
Yeah, I know, thank you.
No, we can't do it, unless, well, for example, I don't know, I got a little bit of road that's in the million district board. So I wouldn't wanna use all that, stop-haul, big old pile of twenty-one dollar rock, we can buy six dollar rock. So I think my idea, from, you know, look at economics, you know, the money line is not a very good idea.
Oh, it's a good idea.
Well, it's a good idea, I just realized it was a good idea. And the price of rock.
Rock.
So we'll, we'll use regular rock, now you do it, and, and I'll, yeah, I'll bring it, with just a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to battle lines, you know?
I'm saying first always from time to time, we drive a dump truck on that front line.
I think if that, I would ask the board to consider, if that happens this year, consider.
Well, and the last three years, you got to take into account, we have had three problems too, so, yeah, but we, we've done a lot of repairs the last three years, yeah.
And I hate to just drop our repairs because we're out of money, I would rather it be out for consideration.
Come back to us when you're out of money, and we'll see what we can do. Hank, you give off, Mayo and Caddie Road?
Yes.
I've been hauling off from Mayo, Caddie Road, the spread year ago, that's.
We, uh, what we generally do, Mr. Rowley, we'll be here in St. Asher, down that way, we haul for Mayo, and when we're on the north side of town, we haul.
I've, I've, I've always got the same time for the place, because it's live and fall, it's, it's.
It, it is a good quality.
How is you looking right now, this, early in the year, in terms of your, your, uh, what you?
Well, I'm just now getting caught up on some of the problems that I made last year while I was blocking these roads, plus we got a lot of things ready for sure working on.
So how much of the private roads, did that, um?
That's really been coming out of my budget now, because y'all agreed to take that out of your favor and climb these districts and this one. Uh, and I, I, so, we haven't got to the end, I've got four more left to do, and we're actually working on those today, so.
You, you got four more private roads?
Yes, ma'am.
And do we have any public roads that, um, the private roads are, are being put ahead of?
Well, we have the C C grade up there, uh, it's, it's in the mess right now.
Okay, now, I, I know this was not on the agenda, but for one commissioner, I don't want private roads and droplets done before we do public roads. That should, well, it shouldn't ever be, period, but for, for stop, that should be the last thing, I shouldn't be talking to you, I didn't. That would be the last thing we do, are these private roads.
And I've got pretty much the, the roads that people live on, doesn't anybody live on, on the C C grade, one reason why we have, jumped all this yet, I, I know it's bad shape, I know we need to fix it, but. But I've, I've been contemplating, like, I've, I've done one yesterday, a private drive, and then we went yesterday afternoon and worked on county roads, but sometimes it's.
This is kind of fitting, and so we can change, because. I was wondering about, I was caring about our public roads that have been put behind private roads that we shouldn't be doing anyway.
Uh, those four private roads that you still have to do, don't have to do them, but they're on the list.
Yes.
Are they large projects? Are they small ones?
I was wrong, say, hopefully in the middle next week, we probably just can't hold it up. Probably never, again, next year.
Well, I think we need to bring this to a close on the five roads, because I get complaints that we generated, Mr. Cooper, I asked their question, they called me. You're my commissioner. And I was told that if you tell road department that you can come over here and fix my private road, sorry, ma'am, but that was a seven-day window back in the, in the state of emergency, and that's over. And I can't, I don't have the authority to tell this road person, or the lawn, that you better fix your private road. But you're doing it for other people. And so it causes some people's mind, so let's, let's practice.
We didn't, we didn't, we don't have these four done, though. We don't need to leave them hanging with all the other people out there.
Well, I, I'm agreeing with, with this commissioner. I agree with both of them. I think that we need to do the top roads as a fifteen-year work schedule, when you kind of call out the post-peak, because we don't ever catch up on post-roads. But, but go in and do them and get them done, and let's don't add any more to that.
Oh, we have, we have got this, it still lasts from September. And, you know, I, I know, I know the board understands that we have a torrential rain, and that creates a lot of maintenance issues on our public roads. I mean, it's just been nonstop, storms and, and continued rain. And then, and, and then it does take time out of our schedules to keep answering these citizens who know they're on the list and we haven't done it yet. And I, I think staff feels, you know, kind of caught, like, we, we need to finish, but we have other work we need to do as well. Um, so the, the thought process was, um, just if you have a day here or there and nothing else is tremendous pressing, then try to get it done until we can close the vote on this and be finished with it. And I wanna say, I'm not, I'm not, don't mean to slam you down. If, if you succeed that way, I apologize, because that's not, that's not my intent. Uh, we just have not given, in my opinion, we've not given the proper direction to our administrator. We should have longer than said, when we first got into this nightmare, that these private roads come behind our public roads. But we kind of, we didn't jump in and do what we should have done, and let it go along. And so here we are, and I know, I appreciate you, you getting a lot of my public roads done, because, you know, that's, that's more important than private driveway. Okay, Hank, say that.
That's it.
I know your attorney's not here. But I always sit in his office with prior actions he's been taking against boards or doing work on private roads. You need to be very careful, because if somebody filed a complaint, guess what? And, and Conrad's not here to tell you that, but it needs to be said. Yeah, it's probably something, uh, we need to fight it anyway. There's a lot of complaining out there, the time of that. Okay, listen, if we, well, let's hope that, before we go on to the next one, you kind of have to consider one of them. Let's take a five-minute.
Let, let, let me tell Hank.
Hey, hold on.
We appreciate you, man.
Yes, I appreciate you.
You're in here, good job.
You told y'all.
Thank you, Hank. Let's take a five-minute break and then we'll get on. Now, we have donuts, coffee, uh, water. And then do you want pizza against the lines to go down?
Whatever y'all order.
Yeah, I need the donut first.
Yeah, so, so, that's it, commissioner. Pay it, pay it this time. Whatever you order.
You don't ever take that much. You don't ever give a thing, but you're a gift, you wouldn't give a thing. On that part.
Can I listen?
Yeah.
I, I got skin foot on this.
Right, and Charles, and you had on that.
You got a lot of research, and why would we?
Yes, sir, it's not all that.
I was saying, well, a little.
Hey, you all. Right, all the way down, all the way down fast.
I don't know, I don't know. Huh? Yeah, that's it. I don't have to go, I got to go, I'm, I'm a caller, first.
I, he had a.
He had to have that for me?
No.
But that makes sense, man.
Well.
Yeah, I'm on top of you, but I'm gonna be nice.
I'm, yeah, I would.
But, yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, I've got the color, I've got it.
But we got the first day, I'm in the morning. Well, we're doing, yeah.
And we called it last night, and I mean, I was, I was looking, they have a hundred of them.
Quite a lot.
Right, right. Your time up, and you know, you're not, you're going.
I'm sure, uh, we would do.
Yes, pretty fine. Or the money, so we have to regulate, shut down the deal, and all go there, and all. Clear, any of them.
I know, I understand.
No, it's not. It's another one, but that, according to Dale, the money, but that's pretty much.
Very, very hard, so, you rock your path, the walk right here, and one day.
He won't, he won't come up there and help us from church and call through there, and he's crossing it and bringing it in. He says, that's good, I reckon, you know, he's out there. He's pretty proud of that, I think. Lewis Campbell, I'll say, you're pretty proud of that. Can't say that.
I know.
I know they got real.
They got another name, they got to get you.
Okay, thank you.
Mm. Trying to get through there, that's so good. Boy, yes, I, I, I feel like I've been enough, boy. I, I, I drink liquor, do you wet? I'm sorry. No, there's a guy I want, and you got every one. How many, the mother, how many of it for next year? Then you. Oh. I imagine that we can, about a couple of days. Rocking them, like, one, two loads, thanks, I was like, bring. Like, I'm big all along. Come out, I'll pack a lane. Because they don't make that many runs, because tomorrow they got.
I hope I wouldn't.
They got a lot of them inside. They put all the garbage in there, and it's left you on that big, and I got them. But it's, they even took all the garbage, all they ran on that, every day. That's, well, so. Here, we don't carry many tons when we.
Chocolate, thank you.
I had their place fixed.
I love the chocolate.
Especially when it's hot, you have to hold it again.
I don't, I don't really understand this. Oh, that's, that's. Give my, I mean, I, I hadn't bothered you all, uh.
Really, I know what?
I'm like. Well, I have, I have, I have, I have, I have my ass, but I'm, I'm. No, no, I'm trying to go forward. I do that, uh, I do that for, you know, sending them for.
What do y'all think about this lately, right, Grant?
Uh. Well, my concern is, I mean, you know. Find out what we're just not doing. And I don't mean this, I'm serious. I'll fix it, because it's a little bit loud, but I'm, I'm, I'm telling all of them anyway. It's not, it's, and I mean, so it makes a place for me to build, why?
And they what time you want?
Act if you would, uh.
Oh, good.
It's like, so, don't you? We also don't expect a poppin' building, you know, and this.
I, I thought you had your name earlier, I thought you made your name here. Yeah, it was work, uh, so long.
Well, and that's my concern, I'm not playing this for bad, you know, I'm just saying.
What are you talking about?
If you're, if you're on a keeping this for the next, if you were meaning on that, then it's for my family, really. Listen, we don't, listen.
It's the tax abatement, is that what I saw on the map?
Yeah, what's that on? And, and that's, I'm, I'm tired of you walking all about that, so. Next one, sure, no tax abatement, yeah, okay. That's, yeah, that's it, I don't think there would be a choice, so.
And then, sure, I mean, that's, that's one of the ones, I got.
So, I mean, it's, I'm going to check, because let's, we talk today. We can make sure we got plenty of time to log in, and, you know, look for.
That's all we need, that's all.
Well, the most important I have is, um, with the new equipment, if it was to have, you know, something like that. Hmm. That's a little bit, and, and it could be a very, you know, you'll spend a lot of time in there. All, and, and, and four weeks, three. And all other things, so, for me, that thing, uh, I can, you know, I'm gonna go.
You need to say about tax rebate, you're, you're talking about.
What, what?
Talk about tax rebate, you don't say, yeah.
You doing that, is that?
Well, you're a little bit, you know.
I'm hanging in that, that, yeah.
Did you get one?
Yeah, I had surgery on that third, because, hmm, it's better than, two days, I've been on the wall.
Two, three minutes, I have the, uh, L P over twenty some money.
Yeah.
And, uh, it's, it's amazing, it was.
I didn't know that yet, I feel.
I'm waiting on the late forty.
They get something, yeah.
I'm catching up with him, Jim.
You can take my name, I'm, I'm.
Okay, the main thing on our business, number six, tax rebate, man?
Yeah, right, yeah. All right, take care, yes, sir.
What I want us to do today, I think, where it all comes to hell, to do this, is to, now, that's the question. Now, we're done, um, how this order is gonna look, how's the chemical fairer so that it's gonna enter us and will enter the business? Um, we have two appointments, we're gonna have to vote on, at our special meeting today, so we got a lot of work to do. This is a very critical issue on my end, um, I know there's been a lot of conversation back and forth and some things that have been not clear for some of us. Um, and I have to make, I'm gonna go ahead and make what I have to say and then anybody else can take what they've got to say too, but I've spent a lot of time in the last two, three days making notes and, and stay up at night sometimes, you know, figure out what is the best thing, well, I don't have all the answers, but I do have some ideas. And the one thing that I wanna say is that this tax rebate, the purpose of this tax rebate, and our willingness to do it, is of course to help the company, but at the end of the day, it's to get jobs for us. We're doing this because we want jobs, because Taylor County people that have jobs in Taylor County. So, I think that we have to make sure that the businesses that are applying for this, that they know that, that we want, uh, we want jobs, and I think it's incumbent upon them to pray to us that they've done what they say. So, I think that for the companies, I'm just going through some of my notes that I've made, is, uh, that these companies need to be clear and understand what they're committing to. If you say you're gonna add ten employees, and I wanna say, I wanna qualify that, it should be ten permanent employees, not.
Full time?
Full time permanent employees, not, you have a second project, and a month they're gonna be through, you can say, well, I hired ten employees, or fifteen, or however many it is.
No, man, the way it's, right.
We're looking for high paying, good, permanent positions, so.
Permanent.
It was, so, if, if they commit, they tell us, we're gonna put on ten people, or hundreds, whatever it is, that's great. We're gonna take you at your word for that, but, um, by January, what, thirty first, you have to come before us every year and give your annual report and bring proof, proof that you have got. They'll have ten full time permanent employees, if you don't, then you're gonna owe us back the money, because that's only fair. We're gonna, this is a partnership between the county and the business, and we wanna help you, we're gonna get you, you know, we wanna help you out, but in the, in the, in the meantime, you've gotta fulfill your commitment to this county, rather than doing something for you too.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, um, and I think, like I said, it's the responsibility of the businesses to bring us that proof every year, and if you can't prove it, you're gonna owe us the money for what you just paid, and then you, you won't qualify for ten more for the next year, you know, you have to keep that, that amount to your debt, yeah.
Can we get that in contract, well, see, I was just, where we, we would have to say, if you do drop down to sixty or forty, that you get ten, we can cut you a certain percentage, you'll go, same, I'm cutting them all the way out, we need a, we need a scale to go by.
That's what I'm saying.
And then, and it needs to be legal, you know, con- contract, we need to work with and get it where, if they go out and did it, go bankrupt, you know, that winds it up, you know, the thing is, most people, they'll harp in off, get going as soon as they can, they'll, they'll cut, cut problems, you know, so, I just, real soon, you know.
Right, if you say you're gonna have ten, and when you come and give us the annual report, you don't have proof for four, then you're gonna owe us some money back, you're gonna owe us, what, forty percent?
The way it is now, we have a way of cutting, cutting it down, if we don't have any legal ground.
Well, I, I, I'm glad you brought that up, Jim, because I've been in a lot of things about just what you talked about, and I'll just use this for the thing. The factory owner is gonna bring in a line, and they're gonna hire, uh, you know, a hundred percent. Well, the first year, you can, we're gonna abate them to a hundred percent, there's gotta be some accountability, and then at the end of that first year, you come in here and we say, well, we didn't get you the thirty five, so, well, we cut you to thirty five percent.
That's right, I think, and we need to come up with what to say.
That's right.
If you don't do what you think, all right, just, Bruce Rabbit's now, he's on one person that's giving out a bait, and Michael Lynn, on one of the buildings, he did that, and all did, because the employee he had from the building was like, look, he, he can't, he's not gonna keep ten employees waiting at that apartment. When, when he ran into his report, well, uh. Don't, 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 let Bruce manage, he manages home extension, age, he manages all those other divisions, but, but the burden on the applicant, the first, take away them, then, then, but the burden, and I'll talk to Bruce, 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 he administered home extension, age, that, that ability extension, you know, so, that, you know, that, 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 that changes us, I mean, you don't have to come to the board and say, I did, you don't have to, but he did, and Bruce, the property praiser, that is, I'll be, that's.
Bruce, how many employees does he currently have?
He, he got given a report, Michael, he's giving, uh.
I think, just looking at it, it looks like that there's never been a report, bond developed for them to file that report. Now, before we had land, they hadn't been mentioned in two thousand sixteen, they also got some kind of grant series of state that required a lot of the reporting that would have been done before, and, and theirs expired in two thousand sixteen, so.
Kenny Jones was expired too, well, did he hire Ben LeBout, he lost him, they, they managed that, and that clock tick, they lost him, so, and he, he's looking at Michael Lynn now, is, is he still in compliance with that?
Well, he wasn't in compliance with start with, if you look at your ordinance, it says that if the value of that property was on the tax roll at the previous year, when they applied, and they paid taxes that year before, then they're not qualified, and he did. I respect the property praiser, he was on the tax roll for two thousand seventeen, and this thing was done in eighteen, so he would have been exempt for eighteen, but it wasn't law enforcement, because it says ten full time employees.
Yeah.
Well, if you say part time employees, it may be the yard man that cleans the yard up once a month, or whatever.
That may, however, however, we just give a fuck, so.
And that's why I'm writing down that, I, I, I wanted to bring this point up, so going forward, we can't fix the things of the past, but going forward, we can have a better, uh, 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 plan in place to protect ourselves, protect them, and, and do it right. You know, we wanna be a good partner with the businesses, but, but, you know, we're, we're, we're gonna hold up to our commitment, but we want them to hold up to their commitment, which is Taylor County permanent full time jobs. Well, if you had it right now, Michael Lynn is not in compliance, because it, because I think the fleet will under discover the report that was done before January the first. That's, that's true, but I will have to say in the past, that, um, Manson basically has submitted annual reports, now, part of that time, that was to receive T P I payment, that was the ministry, that's what I think, yeah. That's right. So, they, they don't have been compliant, and it said it looks like the way that orders breathe is those reports are submitted annually to the county administrator, and then it would be, uh, then it would be, I guess, if the rule of the board, if that's actually committed in a public meeting, or, or how that is communicated to commissioners. Well. But, I, I will say that it, I can't, in the past, it looks like other companies have been partying, and we have not just taken their exemption away, just looking at what happened in the past.
This board has never voted to take an exemption away, the clock ticked out, I didn't make.
Right, the exemption applies to what, on the land.
Yeah.
You don't get an exemption for the actual real property.
Yeah.
So, you don't know where, I, I don't know where land's putting, they were approved for ten years, and that expired in sixteen, if they closed before that time, and there was still an exemption after that, then you may have a problem with that, I don't know.
We talked to him about, he put it, and Bruce was off, and they, and Robert's in now, Michael in now, and I feel that, I'm telling you all this, uh, T P D A's got some real cleanups to do, and I'll sit y'all down, I didn't look at that email that I made, but I've had five questions of the directors, and he hasn't answered any of that.
Well, according, I wanna do this, uh, this to the tax rebate, and right now, we'll talk about T P D A later, well, according to your county ordinance, the application is made since T P D A, and somebody starts to review it in ten days, and within thirty days, and it says, are assumed as practical, there's the code to review that application and make a recommendation. And I looked on Gulf Coast Plumbing, there's two, um, Gulf Coast was on tax roll last year, and they did not follow that, because their tax value was extended to the tax roll last year, full time, and now they've made an application, active tax, has T P D A endorsed that?
No, 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 they didn't do that there, T P D A doesn't want to, they wanna give a few, a few matters to them, but T P D A board, if you make it clear, as one member, we'll, we'll make a reference, they, if it's set to cry, they will say, yes, it doesn't, we want, but, but they, they're, uh, and they.
Well, looking at the paperwork I've got, Gulf Coast Plumbing, documentation was filed with T P D A, um, October the twenty ninth of eighteen, and according to the letter and stuff that's attached to your documents, T P D A, the, uh, it goes to the application review on January seventeenth of nineteen, that's a little bit more than ten days. Okay, and more than ten days.
All right, now, now, we're coming around from Michael Lynn to Gulf Coast, to, to factories. Let me, let me just start, like, with, with Gulf Coast. Now, most of us know Bruce, uh, former student, so is his wife, so is, so, my friend's here, there, so man, he almost admitted it here to us on the night, he, he doesn't qualify.
Yeah.
Because he's not bringing ten jobs.
Yeah.
He's got five, and he may add five, well, that's not bringing ten new, and plus.
He was not.
He was not on the tax.
He was on the tax roll.
Now, I cannot, I cannot vote, he, he, so he's a, he's a dear friend, I cannot vote to give him the tax, because he does not qualify, and I think Bruce understands that.
He does, I'll agree with that, he's, he's understanding.
He definitely, he, 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 I think, I think we are, without, so this afternoon, we need to do this, we're all in agreement, all right, all right, go ahead, all right, now, let's go to Michael Lynn. I don't know how I made this mistake, and, because I voted for this, and it's, I recall, uh, stayed at the night, trying to remember, Michael Lynn's request came about the same time as the request for this big apartment complex, which we.
Happy, give it out.
It was just a little bit after that, right?
That's right.
You know, you gonna look at them, do them, yeah, and, and, and the thing that came to me is, if you go to look at these industries that are out of town, go to look at this local, boy.
That's right.
And our attorney did not pick up and alert us that the wording in that ordinance is all he said, and I'm bringing twenty five part time jobs, well, that, that, he doesn't qualify, but, and, I, I would suggest, I mean, he's done issues, he, he, I, I would, I would suggest that, um, the Michael Lynn issue, that we ask our administrator to request his report, which would due January the thirty first, and let's look at it, let him come and bring us some non-die, if he can justify that you've got ten jobs, and I'm gonna see something other than, something really going back to the model of, I got ten jobs, I wanna see some documentation, some tax force, and if he can't do that, then I have no choice but to vote to terminate that.
I agree with all of that.
All he said to him is, no, that, not, nothing, that, 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 you just, you.
That's not what the ordinance said, the ordinance.
Ornis says they will.
Good day, George, let the property praiser.
Ornis says that they will bring it to the county administrator, who will let recommend that to the board.
Let County George let the property praiser administer the tax exemption, I don't wanna give up that part.
Well, no, I don't wanna do that, I understand what you're saying, only as far as the workload, but I, I think the purpose of that, except the board can make a decision, the property praiser does not report to the board, I do, you know, and I can get data from, from.
That's fine, but, all right, let's go back, go back to the idea of.
Yes.
About my plan on how we could handle this Rob Lynn, is that, is that makes pretty good, is that fair, is?
Yes.
I'd make it real fair.
Uh, yeah.
I'd make it real fair, you know, I made the same mistake you did, but then I was looking at that other book, coming in every time, friends from out of town, and it just, but, now, Michael, when he filled out the paperwork, he knows good and well that it says full ten full time employees, because, this, when, when, when he filled out the paperwork, he read all that, it's on the first. Somehow, if he can come and he can justify to us that he has ten good saying, full time employees, that were added to, you know, we might have to, have to let him continue with that.
And his company probably has ten full time employees.
Ten new employees, but it's them these throw in investments that has to comply.
Only a part.
And yet, I don't know why, somebody didn't go back and check, the tax roll, the year before he made the application, but, um, the two thousand, two thousand seventeen tax roll, he had billed him one of the states at one million, two hundred and three thousand, seven hundred dollars.
Which one did they?
This is on Michael Lynn.
Yeah.
And the land was assessed at ninety four thousand, one ninety, which you don't get in the exemption, but your county ordinance says that if it's on the tax roll the year before, they're not qualified.
Well, he tried to cover it, and raise his personal attorney, and T P D A attorney, he got it, uh, came Michael.
But that's a conflict.
He did that, but that, you don't get.
That is a very real, but I'm, I'm like, like Commissioner Page and Commissioner Moody said, we all voted from emotions, from our hearts, rather than from our brains, because, you know, it, it, when they say you let these people from out of town come in and you do it for them, and we got somebody here in local, and, and so, you know, it, it pulls at our heartstrings, and, but we shouldn't have done that, but going forward, go ahead.
Yeah, but, all right, now, now, I'm just gonna lay out how, how I feel about it, and you all can feel free to disagree with me, but we talked now about how we can deal with, 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 you know, Michael Lynn, we talked about how we can deal fairly for the rest of the night, even, this apartment complex thing, uh, there's no need to do anything on that, they haven't built anything else, all right, so if you let that, we just sit there and, and just watch it.
You don't have to talk to the court.
Yeah, they got, tell us about lawsuits and anything.
Let me think about this, let me find it.
Now, that relates to each other.
I doubt it would.
They're not supposed to have a.
They will.
Now, who's the ex-cop official that contacted these lenders, and told them, don't do it?
It wasn't me.
What, man?
I'm not related to him. I'm not related.
I'm saying, I put it this forward, said, if it make it work, the manager said, if it make it work, we can give it a chance, remember that?
Okay, okay, good, just the thing on, just, the don't gonna have to leave it in the night, about this one, on the one for the, uh, kit factory, what I looked at there was, they asking for an exemption for nineteen, and they're requesting all the new equipment, and according to the information, the equipment don't be delivered until sometime in next, oh, maybe F A, nine.
Of, of, of this year.
The intangible tax return for the, for the year of nineteen, I'm not sure when that deadline is, you know, that won't, when he made his return, I think it's due sometime first of the year, along with.
It's not January at once, later.
He has to make a return, and that equipment will be on this, but then if you grant him an exemption, and he adds it in May, and they add to the tax roll, he's gonna get an exemption on some equipment that he didn't actually put on his return.
But then, because you start to follow.
Oh, yeah, so, when you all consider that, and you may wanna say, and you may wanna.
Not wanna make a difference.
Right, you say, this exemption will be, be then, when you put that equipment in, and it's put on your intangible tax return, yeah.
And they avoid that.
Yes.
I'm not real sure, but I believe he leased the building and brought some equipment back again.
He told the board the night, it made, uh, two thousand nineteen.
He was at twenty thousand, twenty eight dollars.
Right, the delivery cost, right, it's.
It's new, though, it's, it's new lot.
So, that gives us more consideration, may want to set, may give effect in next year, if that's the case.
Well, let me, I'm, I'm, let me, let me get back, get back to my, my thinking on, on the process. He asked, or, he, he thought he rang, quote, up to a hundred jobs, well, eleven is up to a hundred, no, no.
No, there's a table, Mr. I'm following, right, in your packet, it's, it's, I just want, this was provided to us yesterday, and the front page, um, kind of, it's blank, I mean, it, it hits the numbers off.
All right, the right job, projected to be added, is a hundred.
Yes, right.
So, they changed it now, from up to a hundred, what he said is a hundred.
Or more.
Or more, so, based on the fact that they have, say they're gonna bring in a hundred jobs, and they can just account that we all want jobs in Taylor County, and we don't want this board to be looked at as somebody who's not trying to cooperate with the economics of, uh, uh, I'm willing for one year to do a hundred percent of it, and that year would start top this year probably, but the next, and then, we would look at the data, and if you're doing what you say you're doing, and you've got your hundred jobs, it's, that, it's, it's a hundred percent. And if the third year, you still got to do a hundred jobs, it, it's a hundred percent, but you follow that, maybe a quarter, quarter of, it's pretty simple math to me, you get forty, forty percent.
I don't even, if they don't do what they said you're gonna do, it's bad.
Well, I don't do that.
Well, this year, you would dissolve the contract.
Just dissolve it, and not give them a second chance, you come in here the first year, you gotta give them a chance, first year, we gave you a hundred percent, and if you come in the second year, you have a message, the deal, the deal is over.
Yes, that's the reason for the annual report.
That's right, and it's over and done, and, and, and we can just forget about doing it at a renewed rate.
And I think that shows goodwill.
That shows goodwill on our part.
We're wanting to be a partner with the company, and we will do our part, and those are our bodies.
And, and, and we, we cannot be criticized for not being very cooperative, a hundred percent, you talk about if this thing works out, and they pull, pull their end of the deal, this is two point six one three, two million, six hundred thirteen thousand dollars, over ten years, money that could have been put into the tax roll of Taylor County, and you can't expect the company to come in here and pay nothing, and that will be offset somewhat, because these thirty, these, these are thirty thousand other jobs now, these people have all had something to do with the economy, that's right, so, I'm willing to do it, time for when, one year in the past.
I think the question maybe is when all one hundred jobs will be materialized, and I think.
Well, all right, that, 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 that's what they need to tell us.
And that, I would encourage you to ask that question this afternoon, because they'll be here, but that, to me, was the area of ambiguity that you referred to, is when will be one hundred jobs?
No accountability, no justice from here, that's, that's the bottom line now, I'm sitting y'all on them, and I, we read, I think, to look at it, I ain't talking about letting them, so things like potential, probably, that need to have done it yet, let them do it, and then relay them.
And that's what we're talking, and, and, but after one year, then, uh, you prove up, and you gotta do another year, if you didn't make your business, then, uh, we gotta try to explain, I believe you owe us money back, I believe that the county attorney should probably draft their ordinance, and that's by each year, that, some circumstances by the board of county commissioners, that they have met their obligations, for the tax year two thousand twenty, the property praiser is requir, has requested to extend that exemption.
Because it's, 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 they're here, was that?
And, right, and then you wouldn't have to go back and do the ordinance every year, okay, now, I would like to see a form, and it specifically says what documents they bring, so they don't bring it on the back of an envelope, let's make, let's make this consistent for every business, herefore, to do the same exactly, use the same form, the same kind of proof, and that way we standardize the process, and that's business, and on that form, you need to know how long that works in your book, because if they put their employment date, and, and the one that gets that report, he's gonna know that that person was put on there yesterday, so they comply, or they get put on there, two weeks ago, so they comply with the ten employees, if you make, then, and they can do it on one of the basis, how many you had each month in that year, you're gonna have to tie it down, so if you don't, there's gonna be a loophole that they can find, but you're gonna.
Maybe, uh, this, T P A's a server, if this, their T P A's a server, took the burden on that, T P A's a server, if they comply, and T P A, and their payroll records and all that stuff, now, our question is, is after the first year of a sentence, that, once the comrades are paid at the audit, how do you wanna read to proceed to the second year? If you come in sharp, do you just cancel the whole deal, or you, you give a percentage?
A percentage.
I think a percentage would make me feel a lot better, you know.
They feel a lot better, well, a percentage to a certain degree, because if they drop it such severity that reflects that the company's in business next year, then we wanna involve it at that point, but to a degree. Well, we could put in something loose in the language in the audit contract, because that's a board of renegotiated contracts.
If, if they know upfront, they got the figures, I thought, if I drop down, he'll forgive him a penny to do better, and, and make sure they got them employees, I mean, if they can.
But this tax rebate is gonna be good, this, this not gonna make it where they come, and I worked two sides of my own plan, and they said, I didn't need it, they deep latched down on the price, they, they got a sweet RV, okay, but that's where they got their, but it's nice to get them.
Well, I wanna, I, I wanna help the business to, uh, because we need jobs, and I think that's our job to try to help make that happen, so I don't wanna give them a bad taste about us, that we're making, you know, I just want them to feel good about us, that we're trying to lead them halfway, and we're willing to do our part.
The rest can come on, I'd say, we don't need to run it out here, right?
That's right.
I mean, we ain't the one with.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm with.
If that was ten twenty million dollars worth, if they can, we need to do everything we can, so, I don't wanna bet, that's kinda one of the hiring deals.
Are you on board with, so far with what we've uncovered?
I'm exactly on board with it.
Yeah.
The sooner the better, excuse me, the, the sooner we can get this done. The sooner the best, excuse me, the, the sooner we can get this done, the more.
We're on track for the time limit.
Yeah, I think it's big enough.
We'll make sure they'll pick up before.
Great, I'm calling.
And I, I tell you something, now, ten years is good. But I say, well, I'd go fifty years or twenty years, I mean, fifty percent for twenty years. That will give, that will know they will be here twenty years now. I don't think it's worth nobody to play.
You can't go over ten years, because that's what the board is looking for.
Okay, well, that's okay, that's okay.
You can extend that.
Well, this is just a, just a thought that comes through my head. We would get the same thing at, at fifty percent for twenty years. We'd get the same amount, they would get the same amount.
Trouble with them.
I have no problem.
Good.
I have no problem.
Well, they count it.
Well, I have a problem. And the reason I have a bad in the problem, I have a problem with the people who live in suburban houses. And they say they tell me that the county commissioners might have a trade code. Or what's gonna happen with, uh, public? Say, well, thirty thousand dollars. And say, well, thirty thousand dollars ain't a whole lot of money, but it beats nothing. It beats walking to a fast food store.
Mm.
Uh, well, then I lived there once, to the website, and looked at Taylor County student system, they started high and heated it. From twenty eight to thirty one thousand dollars.
True.
Ain't that? But if a man and a woman, that they were married, and they get sixty thousand dollars, they gonna afford a small house. And, 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 and do that. But now, the thing we need to teach in Taylor County, I reckon, all over the world, all over the country, is most of them are basic. Well, man, it, you know, when you give a certain name, get them a wife. Let, why, let, let people do that, let it be done with two household families. And I don't know where we start with this. But anyway, my daddy was told me to work. My mama done worked at a metal house. My daddy was told that he could get help from the federal government if he put us on welfare. He said, "That's what matters." And I remember, boy, nobody wanted welfare, they were poor. And that's what we need to teach in this town, you know, rather than pull out of this stuff we hear today and we see. Now, the, anyway, the partner was talking to me, said, "I was hoping that the commission would go ahead and allow these people to come, go be scared of y'all." Not only that, I think me and Pam was there that day when they had the little ribbon cut on it, wasn't it? And they were talking about bringing a packaging plant in, you know? And expanding from what, what they got out there. And it was gonna start to do like Walmart slams and whatnot, you know? And the packaging plant was gonna do better than the, the.
I remember hearing that, when President.
Yeah, so.
You know, they were gonna wait taxes for all the other companies, make the same kind of product.
This thing was a win-win situation to me.
Now, just what, go ahead.
We need to package it so they don't get it, and then get by. So, man.
Now, what, just what if, what if today at three o'clock, these people say, "I, I, I told you what I'll do, and, and I want ten years at a hundred percent, um, we still looking at somewhere else where we may ship this twenty million dollars worth of stuff." What we gonna say then?
He's already brought that he's, he's looking at a second chance.
Yeah, so I'm just saying, if they challenge us on this, how is gonna be our response?
I'm, I'm, if, if we have that chart showing them, you know, that's too much. And then they challenge us, so when y'all fall into that schedule, I don't think with as much money they probably already got invested in getting here, that they gonna pull it out.
I don't think so.
I just can't see them, they're pulling it out.
And we, we're giving them the what they have, yeah, oh, yeah. All you gotta do is, is you need to make them do it.
And they, they asked for a hundred percent for ten years.
Well, I, 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 our plan will be a hundred percent for ten years if you do what you said.
Yeah, that's right. And if they got that chart and it's all legal, so if we just make that mistake, they gonna cut us, you know, with twenty five percent or whatever. They'll follow the rules, yeah. I mean, so we'll let them, they go, they go out for, for ten, ten horses, if they.
Yeah, they got that plant that bargained, I know what it was, yeah. I would say.
Well, we want to, at three o'clock today, we want to, you know, for them to know for sure that we want them to come, and that we're willing to work with them and do everything that we can.
Right.
Now, what they, the, the CFO told me is they need a decision as soon as possible because in, you know, a delay of a week from ordering the equipment can make, can mean a delay of six months of production and delivery of equipment. So they will need to know how fast will we have an ordinance in hand, and, and will this be approved? And I think we decided it would be about a month, maybe a month.
Well, what you gotta do is kinda get their ordinance, get all these stipulations you're talking about in that ordinance. Get it to the paper to advertise, and have a public hearing on adoption of the ordinance. So it could take three weeks, less, you calculate the advertising time, and the board sets a special meeting.
Special, with a special meeting.
Right.
You know, it could be under thirty days.
We have a special meeting on the twenty eighth.
Uh, I mean.
Anyway, but all right, we got to get the proposed ordinance, with y'all telling you what you want in that one. Yeah, and get the notice to advertise. Now, he could probably do the notice to advertise, and do the ordinance later, and send it to the board, and make you a free one, or a special one.
And maybe this will be the change of the total ordinance, not just the public, to be an order to defy anybody, right?
Well, the board, the board's current ordinance was done in two thousand nine, I believe it was, the one you're going off of now. You have not redone it since the last election, but approved by voters to extend it. You're going off the one you did before, I think, I wonder if you say it's two thousand nine?
So what are we gonna do, anyway?
Well, I would say that you could grant them an ordinance now, under your old county order, and then proceed to revise the one you currently have. And keep that in mind.
And they later all again, nothing's very.
Yeah, it's, it's under your current ordinance. But there's some things in there that can need to be real strict, about this recording and all this kind of stuff. But, get their ordinance and get it done within a certain.
I think probably, they're going to be looking for a timeframe this afternoon. Um, what they told me, go, 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 head that to the board, they want, you know.
Well, the board just like that, we're gonna shut them in, have an oral agreement. If you're gonna give them a hundred percent for a year, two years, and then at that time, say, from July.
Our second year is, if you're in compliance.
And they can order that stuff to us, what I'm concerned. If we're gonna go out for now.
The only thing I talked to them about, because they asked that question, and I said, you know, we have to have, the board has to have a public hearing. And tell the board, both on the ordinance in hand, I hate to give you any kind of answer.
Good. Now, that's, that was gonna deal with, first with, uh, I thought we'd deal with these, Russ Knight first.
Yeah.
Do it, and it was difficult. And then we're gonna wait till we get some information back, if you with Michael Lynn or I.
Well, I believe what's on the agenda as well is, is permission to extend the deadline, um, for San Pedro and that one.
Okay, so we will do that. Extend it after y'all want extend the deadline to thirty days or give up, and that's where we're.
What's the date, Mark? How about March first? We don't have to, we can follow that report. You got some others.
Well, now, this is already filled with, with, with. March first, you can buy out, the group's already killed that. He talked, we'll be able to, that's already done.
But the board has to vote on it, yeah.
That's, that's what y'all wanna do, that's fine. But March first is bound to be, because it shouldn't take very long, right, something about the law, look.
You're gonna give us a form, Russell, pretty, you're gonna give us a form that everybody fill out?
Oh, yes, ma'am, I, um, my concern is, i- if you want me to, to, to look, to do some research and develop a form, and then have Mr. Lynn use that form, and then bring it to the board, I mean.
We're doing it, or let us look at it, see if we have any input, or whatever, approves that, and then, um, and on, on the last one, what you can do is put it in there, um, because it's all personal problems. That they, they're gonna do that.
Hang on, hold on.
And you put subject in the, uh, your equipment, then, uh, add to the, uh, personal property tax, they're gonna have a problem with it.
Yeah, don't wanna give any evidence until they put it. I would, I would talk about how I do this, do it like they've asked, but then paid off some while, they leave. I would say, you know, that they never got to do that in the report.
Yeah.
But, keeping something vague and, you know, they're gonna approve, yeah.
I agree.
They use that down file for it. But that, I, I, I'm getting. Well, I think, but it's gonna be what, for me, it's gonna be what, how it's written in that ordinance. That ordinance, you'll have to spell out that at the end of each year, what I'm gonna look at.
They order to secure the actual tax exemption. That man, but he's sitting here, if he will agree, that he'll, the exemption for a year, two years, or whatever. Um, they don't, because all they're saying to do is, are you saying to do it?
I, I, you just do it, and you, how long you want, but if he doesn't comply, and that report comes in a year, he's not in compliance, it's gone.
That's right, that's what the ordinance said, that's true.
Yeah, I think he reads it, he knows that.
That's right.
They do.
Yeah, they, they, you know, that's what me and all, I done said, yeah.
I think the board's got the time, it's gonna be a hundred percent for ten years, or it's gonna decrease?
Hundred percent, ten years, provide and you go about all.
And that's decreasing any, anybody now.
Yeah.
See, I was all in favor of saying it that way, go fire it to it.
Yeah.
I'm all with it, huh?
I, I, just so the ordinance, we don't have to take it out loud, and, and, and it's always got a good point, but I don't wanna put a negative spin on this. Yeah. Just so those, the, the fine print, it's real clear, what year we'll have to bring at the end of the year. And then the board can decide, well, are we? You're out of here. You know, I'm fine with that, because it's gotta be some kind of look.
Put the burden on them.
The burden on them.
So, in our, in the ordinance that was decreed in two thousand and nine, section eleven, it says all exemptions granted are conditional. Um, they have to maintain the new business or expansion, um, for the duration of time. Um, in addition, the application is conditioned upon applicants submitting an annual report to the commission evidencing the satisfaction of this condition. This report shall be on a form adopted by the county, the report shall be received no later than January thirty fourth of this year. It's very clear in our report.
I, I, if you read that, this, or it belongs to.
Yeah, and, and the other thing, um, well, you know, and you probably need to, um, think about the date, uh, when you have to comply, because your order says that you'll do the form. And that means it's on that form, and what, when you do that form, you put what attachments you want to put on there. If you want a copy of this table, that's right.
Yeah.
If you want a chart that says that John Doe's acquired, um, that's right. Since I made him, and he's been on the job, so on.
Yes.
You don't have to have a tax.
Well, we gave, how you, we certified CPA certified, but this is true information. CPA's not gonna do it, I'm not there. I think we, we're gonna set us in a very good position if we do it like, like we're talking about.
Yeah, well, you can do this, this, this form, just like the board does, using a lot of your stuff. It's approved by the county attorney, and then it's, uh, put on the agenda for the chairman's signing the bar. So if you add it, uh, approved by CPA, so they have time on that form.
Yeah, they got CPA, and that, that's, to me, cleans it up, you know.
You can do that. Another thing, too, somewhat for us to have standardized left, that we could send down annually, say, the first of, of the last December, the first of January.
Remember that.
And be one of them, just for my media, so that, that, because this time is important to me. I mean, if we say January first, first, that's what I mean.
Send them a copy of the form, they gotta say that.
So as far as, um, Mr. Lynn, if, if we need to develop a form, and have it approved by the board, and approved by the attorney, maybe we need it in sixty days.
I think he's gonna buy it.
We could get our Justin Rose cleaning up our house, and then he would have time.
He would have that.
I think he would.
I said, he, you're all right, we'll comply, that's, that's all right, as long as we make progress on that.
We just don't want, so no can't get played, we don't want it to go.
Well, I can't, I don't wanna pull it, just make it this board and say, "You all, all, we're just walking."
If, if we match up a company that would bring us a hundred jobs, we'd all have to leave town.
Yeah.
I don't wanna have to.
You can go across, yeah, no, I.
I mean, I, I'll work through the right place, we want jobs, all of us want jobs.
Right, yeah. And I'm really, I'm encouraging, but, they, that's about a hundred years. Thirty thousand dollar jobs, you know, we'll get with the oil presentation, we made that number, about thirteen dollar an hour jobs. Which didn't impress me a lot.
That's what CPA.
About fourteen, thirty five an hour.
How much?
About fourteen dollars, thirty five an hour.
Well, which isn't that thirty dollar jobs with fourteen?
No, fourteen dollars, thirty twenty five an hour, that was then twenty nine thousand, six hundred and forty dollars.
So we're talking about fourteen dollars, fourteen hour jobs.
Fourteen twenty five.
Yeah.
Fourteen dollars, twenty five an hour.
I think he said they drank from thirteen hours, so he drunk it out for me.
Okay, thirteen might get a little bit less. Okay, all right, all right.
Okay, well, you know.
That's a lot of, it's, it's, it's a buck years.
Yeah, that's what our board is all about, and it makes me feel something that we, you know, that we are working together on this, we're all on the same page, trying to accomplish the same thing, this is what we should be, I'm just proud of this board.
I agree with you.
For, for, you know, what we're accomplishing. I'm proud of our staff for what we're accomplishing, but I just, I have to say this. I just know, I just feel like it's a new day, a new year in county government. And for the first time, I have felt so positive, so good about our government. We're, I know we're moving forward, and we're doing things right, and I'm just so proud, that's all I can say. I just wanted to give the board an update on the apartment process, a period of apartments. Um, their ordinance said that they anticipated a minimum of ten million dollars in capital investments in their period facility during the next two years, well, they're two years ago. Um, five quality jobs, you, that one was approved with five quality jobs to be created in the first few years. And it also said, their annual report, and they not on their annual report either, so. But I think they have not received any exemption. I can kind of understand that, since they haven't received any exemption, I don't think that they are.
Right, well, well, it talks about that, uh, the exemption, uh, commenting with the first year of the new improvement and personal property add to the separate loss, and that's the nine years back then.
Well, we're gonna.
Well, that's.
But that, that, you're gonna tell the board. And on January the three, there was a lawsuit filed in the office against this project. And it's complaint for lien foreclosure and for damage. Now, that takes different files. How long it's gonna take it to go to court?
Is it, is it land law?
No, the consulting firm that needs, uh, I guess, initial phase of everything, they have to pay them off. According to this complaint, uh, there is, the, um, it's for surveying and other professional services for the property. The hope of the value of the, of the surveyor was a hundred and twenty six thousand, five hundred thirty three dollars and fifty cents. And they have failed to pay, um, the unpaid principal amount is sixty five thousand, nine ninety one twenty four.
Mm.
Now, um.
Well, that, 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 that was branded this exemption up with those five jobs? So they, oh, I did, that's a plant, I was really supposed to plug on that.
I think that's gonna be a gated community, seven hundred dollars a month, would not be a hood project. But they supposedly got some timing, and I thought, that's one of another title or apartment, you don't want that.
No, no, it's supposed to be twenty percent, so it's a good rent, now. You know, but never, yeah, but never a top, title or park. But if you remember now, we just spent, went on the line, six million dollars there, out of this company, out of, uh, Escamino County.
Well, that was.
That's title war.
I think that's gonna be that, that, that.
Yeah, yeah, I love that, yeah, we did, I remember that.
That's the one title war did, because they were gonna re.
Yeah, yeah, the county's already live some of that, and, and others. But now, they're, they're working on it, that's, you know.
They are.
Yeah, you're like at Point Fuddles or something, or they're gonna put county pieces on it.
But I just wanna let the board know the law that's involved on that one. And that, uh, if they spent ten million dollars on what they've done out there, they don't put a lot on the end. But the, the tax that become effective and will be actual building destruction, and it's put on tax, the land is not, it's still under act.
Well, the agreement that we already have with them, now, it, would that be considered null and void?
Well, the agreement that we already have with them, now, is, would that be considered null and void if this point passed?
You need your county.
Right, it sounds like it would.
Kind of mean I am.
We need an opinion on that.
Because you got, it anticipates a minimal of five quality jobs to be created at their period facility during the next two years, well, they first two years is gone.
Well, I remember that, that's the thing recommended to us by CPA, and out of the planet, we're just gonna ask five jobs.
So, that's out there, I mean, which is.
We should never have done that.
I gotta be careful.
But I just wanted the board to know the law that's been filed and stated, and whatever the odds, try to do that.
Good, keep it up.
Good job, what time is it?
It's, uh, I'm still, eleven. Okay, are we ready to move on to the next one, ma'am?
That's just, I make one call here, if you all will look at that ordinance and how CPA supposed to function, I think you're gonna read me on that, it's a little crazy, huh? But that really needs to be moved up to a stop, leaving, working out of town, I think that's no longer there, but, but we need him here, because he saw here there was a board that they have to pay their first to take care of, you know. And look at that, it's, it's live, uh.
Okay, so, sure, the store act, um, the one that you wanna plead on them, do you want me to ask Kevin to come down, or would I? I took the.
I figure what I'm gonna do.
I did that.
Go get the TV thing, yeah, I got it.
Oh, wow.
Good luck.
You're playing all six years, you know, you hang up.
Just not enough.
About the one, the hospital.
Take care.
Okay.
Look like you're doing good.
Yeah, just bring it all over all there.
Oh.
They're very.
I'm gonna get my fix taken out.
Oh.
Take them out.
So, the hospital can do a copy.
They do, they have two.
They also included on the. And he was gonna have a lobby, and the hospital had a copy, and I had a copy and I put it in there with the staff, so it sums up the, you know, the, we did a job, right? So, they can tell where the word on, so, so we did some of that.
I'm so glad that was what you did, because when I had walked this table back, I'm not. I'm sorry, ma'am. This next one too, before the next.
Which one is it?
I already got her control. I I need to get sent to the staff on both these issues. Well, somebody else is taking a break, is anybody need to come to the bathroom now, I'm here at the top. I'm not ready to bring our breath to the bathroom, I, I wanna eat it, man. Yeah, that sounds good.
Well, for all of us here, I see that, in two weeks, there's three I don't hear, it's not related to the board, and I swear they're gonna make sure it's two weeks, it's a little late.
That's all? I don't know. That's bad. I know, but.
I thought that was the end.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you.
How about a bar?
Well, we didn't, it hasn't started since then, and I had. Yeah, so, the hospital, we really need a pick of copies, have it or not have it?
I don't know. Do you want me?
I have it, I think I'm getting it.
I I I'll have any questions, the, that you think they want for funding to move?
I think, uh, sometimes, I think now the term engineer.
And he's going to.
It's the, I'm gonna get that.
Did you ever do that?
They told me the contract that I'm still in, other term was the engineer, right?
Yeah.
I just, I just.
You know, um, what he done, he carried the board, yeah, yeah, I'm pleased with the, with the. No, I'm the way I'm sure the coach, you know, why you save that, uh, to the coach? And we got, we got, uh, county, uh, uh, he, 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 he run a, had a picture. Anyway, I don't think, but as a joke, so he was exactly what this guy said, it's more coach.
He's not, oh, you're not wanting?
Oh, still, that's pretty good, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We need to be our size, that'll still be like that.
Yeah, in the number of years that, you know, you, the board's looking at, probably nature is used to this deal, it's passed twenty five years already.
Um.
And, you know, you've got a hospital out there, it's, what, fifteen years past?
Yeah.
So, you look at this, the major, uh, issues with buildings now.
Oh, yeah, they do, in New York too, up there in Brooklyn, we all, you left.
No, no, what, that, no.
Yep.
Yeah.
It's still somewhere out. Still somewhere out, no matter what.
Yeah.
That's it.
About like, oh, man, now we out too.
I'm gonna tell you what I'm worried about. I'm over by, middle.
The problem is, they all have a, they have plans to do, they want here and there, at the wall, you got a major thing to find that corner out there.
Right, that way.
Now, they put three somewhere and we tear the rest, they're reusing that, they go last round.
Yeah, they think so, I didn't count, yeah.
Go ahead.
They didn't speak that board.
Yeah, they're working on now, I thought it was, I guess, they might, they're gonna fix it and they're gonna, we're gonna have to do something to get the national done too, but I thought it gets worse.
Yes, yes, ma'am, um, as, as discussed at the last board meeting, um, we have a, a deadline, um, for submitting grant applications for the first stage of the top three funding project. That would be for the feasibility study, now, according to our S T P, um, it's pretty clear what order, you know, we go in and and the reason for it. So, I, so, we provide it in the approved S T P for Taylor County. Um, I, I don't know if we can veer from that without an S T P amendment, but I would say that it helps that if we have some type of guiding document, or it helps me anyway. Um, just because it, I have something to continually reference, um, and I think it makes our process clearer, easier to define, if we know what we say our guidelines are and what rules that are following. I'm not, but we, the big question is, if we choose to veer from this path, what the implications are. Um, it, it appears that we cannot veer too much without some type of S T P amendment, or it may just be clarification in the grant application. But if we, if we veer very much, we will have to go back to the Gulf Consortium, who will have to go back to the legislature. But, but I'm not saying it can't be done, this is a very long timeframe for this project, so, I don't, um, my suggestion would be if the board chooses to veer from the path we're on, we need to define that and amend our S T P and then start.
Well, let's see what we're exploring.
Correct, so.
First thing we need to do, you know, when I was up there, I heard S T P, I heard E I T, I heard I T T, and C T T. S T P is what now, I heard that is.
Our stated finisher plan, and that's what we have in our hands, so, we have an approved stated finisher plan, and this is for our top three funds. Um, this is our language, from what I understand, of the direction that we want to go with our top three funds. So, within the S T P, there are multiple properties identified, um, what we need to be, um, getting into the is, um, we have citizens who feel like they didn't know there was a deadline. Um, we have two, um, entities that wish to add properties to this list, um, and so, if, if the board wants us to, to start the process of submitting grant applications for feasibility studies, we feel like we need guidance from the board. How many, how many properties do you want feasibility study for? We have seven, twelve, it looks like, um, do you want less than that, do you want more, do we need to allow people to add properties to the list?
First thing next to do, let's add a deadline now, okay, go ahead, let's establish a deadline, and then that way, we can work with what we've got here, and if anything else that comes up by that deadline, but we gotta cap, do y'all agree we have to cap it off?
Well, we add one property. We need to, we need to put them behind, anybody gonna put the stuff out there?
You add any more properties to this list, then you look up, this is our S T P.
Correct.
And you, and you add one dot, you gotta go back to amendment, total S T P.
I don't know if that's.
They didn't say that, they said that we might could do one or two without any issue, now, they, they don't, they don't give you a say that.
Correct. Well, that's what I told them.
Right.
Looks like it will happen.
Yeah, well, that's.
And we do have a board approved list, I mean, we have a list that was approved by the board of county commissioners, I think the angst is that, you know, I didn't know, or it wasn't advertised, well, it's on, it was on the agenda, so, I'm, you know, I would say it was advertised.
Well, not now, I think everybody, if they don't know, they should know, as much as this has been in the paper or not.
Give them another sixty days, thirty?
Thirty, yes.
Advertise in seconds, is that cutoff date?
And that's fine, but, but I would say if we do that, then we will not, we will not be able to submit grant applications by the end of March, which is fine.
One pro, pro, another day, cutoff next week, I mean. A week or not.
Well, we gotta advertise.
Kind of advertise, wait, we got time to do that.
Okay, let me ask you.
Advertise one time, you a week after the advertising?
Okay, well, I'm going to turn your double back to it now, so, if there are topics that serve to get people another two weeks, to add properties to the list, if we have a list of, how many are on there, maybe twelve, fifteen? And we've already got, and it's, I, I think we need to back up a little bit, I think, but do you want, how many, I guess the question is, how many feasibility studies do you want to be paid to have done?
Five.
Five.
Okay.
At twenty five thousand dollars.
Yeah, you want less than that, so many of them?
Uh, I, I don't think you need to have a feasibility study done on fifteen bucks, when we know already, and we've already, so, let five, six rise to our top. What do you think, Kevin?
I, I would probably take another step even further back, and go, kind of the trust of the S T P in that, if our, what, what is our fair objective? If we're looking for, um, distributed, distributed access to the code, are we truly thinking we need five places along that code line to add to our current asset? Or are we really thinking that, you know, we're, we're hopeful that we could add another facility?
If we get one, then we'll pop that.
I mean, because you guys are not long have, having gone through a lot of budget process and understanding the constraints that we have on being able to afford and maintain facilities, so, are we really getting ahead of the game if we were to try to be pursuant, let's put three more across our code? Or should we really be looking for, we can handle one more big one, so that gives us three, and let's look for the best opportunity to put one more big one?
I agree with you.
And if that's the objective, then that's the mindset that you start calling and screening your properties, that this is what I'm after, which I think is a spirit in S T P, in that if that's our objective, then let's move down that path. And I think when you do that, the feasibility's not gonna be a number, per se, but it's gonna be, of the ones that we're aware of in our initial screening, it looks like there are seven, looks like there are four that could be suitable candidates, so, let's just do that. Let's not throw an arbitrary number out, let's have a reason for picking the number we picked.
I'm, I'm with you on that, but what we, we're hoping to get access to Gulf Mexico, and that means a boat ramp, more than walking out of your truck, put the kayak in where we live is a boat ramp. We can narrow it down, that's probably the only way a boat ramp can be done, to save us a lot of money, and just like talking about adding one in, Benny won't fill that one in, Cedar Island, nobody before it, but there's about thirty families unloading their boats at Danny's ramp down there. One of them comes to me and says, Benny told us, you know, we don't know much more in place, something about it, it's property, he gonna put a cable across it, put a locker, there'll be thirty families out of the place, put the boat in, I put thirty more over the keys, they float around, or Dark Island. And so, that's gonna be a, we, even though we don't do that, we need to key on boat ramps, existing boat ramps, access to the, that would save us a lot of issues with all these other things.
I would always disagree to the extent that the possibility of co-locating on an existing state facility avoids the very initial expense of land acquisition. So, if I'm looking at what I consider one of the positive best options from a private standpoint, if I can avoid a couple million dollars of land acquisition costs, and then I go that into the overall construction costs, I, I think I'm ahead of the game.
Now, if you let sort of boat ramp over there, people can go unload and turn it, we get, that's better, I mean.
I, I added Cedar Island into the matrix, because I, of the two that were suggested, uh, it was a contiguous property that was on water, the other one is, I, I, a, a, a property of like six or eight, I can't even remember, and it's on the other side of the highway, it really didn't make sense for me to waste, excuse me, to invest my time into reviewing the. So, I did put the Cedar Island in there, and there are two facilities there, but the only thing that, that, the thing that comes to my mind immediately was, the initial paragraph in the S T P was that we have existing congestion at our existing facilities. So, residents along the areas where the, the facilities are located are frustrated and exacerbated because there's so much congestion in that area, we need to be looking to put something somewhere else.
That's right.
There is not a private ramp, I mean, there is not a public ramp right now at Cedar, he adds two launch ramps that are very large and private, and it is in the middle of a residential neighborhood. Neighborhood, so, I, I know, I understand what you're saying, I appreciate it, and I, I have the option to put my boat in there, but I don't.
Well, they do, but I don't dare, but the thing is, where do most, where do thirty people gonna go, or thirty five families gonna go, which is.
Let's, let's be more realistic, we can say where, what, how are those thirty people gonna fill when that other seventy five coming in to put their boat in?
Well, I'm saying.
Because there's a difference between it and Dark Island, because I, I do put in a lot of Dark Island, because it's a public access point.
I put in Dark Island, I live in Cedar.
If you think it's dark, about Dark Island, the facility's across the road, and what happens immediately is, the small parking lot fills up, and then you see twenty more vehicles lined up and down there. If you look back at Cedar Island, if we were to do that, where are they gonna park? They're gonna be parking all through there, what's around the property that he's proposing to sell? And through it, the access rights for those houses that are around it, so, I kind of look beyond the, I try to be a little more impartial and objective and say, if I were there, how would I feel about it? And if I expect Dark Island to have to make it here, which is probably, I would be more prone to go to Cedar than Dark, because I don't have as many, um, water problems, because I'm on a canal point, and I can come in and out a lot more than I can at Dark Island. That's gonna move more congestion to Cedar versus Dark, so, with our eyes open, should we truly be focusing to put that in that area, or would we do a community ramp?
Hold on, just a second, I wanna hear from Commissioner Murphy to come, I know some of us have got input from citizens, but that's your, I wanna hear from you.
From my understanding, this is with Cedar Island, do not want a program.
I don't.
We can go there and, and both of us walk, just walk, and, and talk to everybody there, from my understanding, from what I'm getting, nobody wants. And I mean, and the guy who's why they don't want it is because you're introducing promotional traffic into the residential, the infrastructure is not much supportive, it doesn't support it as it now, during scouting, without programs, so, if you.
So, if you compile that in, it is going to be a nightmare, I'm telling you right now. That's what I see and what other people are thinking. Now, I'm just having to relate with you.
I'm saying that for, uh-
Well, now, I, I go down to Cedar Island, about a bit, so we got family down there, and we got a house down there. And I hear, and what I hear is, we don't want this boat ramp at our part residential community. They try to make us be a private place like it is over there too. But don't tell Benny I said that. You know, that, that all are Benny's, 'cause they're friends. But that all, you know, I don't have a dog in this life. But now, I, he talking about we need to go and put it somewhere else. And I understand, and all this for the boat ramp down and for less money, you don't need to be doing the drift. It's probably Benny talking about. Can you launch a big boat ramp?
You can launch thirty-five foot boats there right now, let's say.
How many places down there you can launch thirty-five foot boats?
None, at least, hardly. You can put one in Keen Beach program, but you might get out, you might not. It's a little better to get out of the Cedar Island canal than near Keen Beach canal. What can tell me, I ain't go with thirty foot boat.
Yeah, but not by much. And then when you get into the negative tide, nobody's getting out of there.
Well, what I'm saying, like, negative tide in winter time, it's like-
Well, let's just cut the tax. I'm not for putting one at Cedar Island and become a, don't think it's the right thing to do. Commissioner pay?
Not far.
Commissioner, that's a dead deal now. There's nothing to discuss it, and it's totally, that's three people that don't agree.
And that's based on the community response. It doesn't matter to me, it has its own.
Well, I, I find that anyway, don't, I don't have a dog, but I got two, but I'm asking myself, I don't need them. But the thing is, uh, I'm just thinking about the thirty people that live at Cedar Island, you that's what I, you know.
Oh, do you think you tell them how good Seagull?
They have ours at Cedar Island, they use that.
How many have good Seagull?
Everybody, I don't like the, the, I don't like the decision by somebody saying that if I don't get my way, I'm gonna close all my private property.
Exactly.
But I'm just trying to my body, exactly. To try to do my little threat to gain leverage, that, I don't, that, that hurt.
I mean, I don't mind that, no, the thing is, it probably gonna happen. And then that thirty people that talk down to Keen Beach, you know.
We're, we're, we're gonna put a boat ramp anywhere from the proposed Hagens Code to Spring Warrior. Somewhere along that code line, we want to put a boat ramp in there. So, we have to look at the logistics behind it. Accessibility, height, depth, width, I mean, all of these things combined. I mean, you don't want to just buy a half a acre and put a, a serious combo. Now, if, if I intend on building a, a boat ramp in my district, I wanna build a boat ramp. I wanna build a project, not, I mean, not project. And, um, so I'm looking at all the angles, and, and the most important angle to me is the feasibility behind, the law makes it. A lot of these on the list, uh, majority of them are good. But in my interpretation, what I'm looking for is accessibility, right? Okay. Access, getting out, if you put a boat ramp on Cedar Island, during scoutings, and I'm pretty sure everybody has been out there on during scoutings, to go a thousand feet takes a half hour on a major thoroughway. So, if we can find a boat ramp there, that's gonna complicate time travel to an hour. You gonna go a thousand feet in an hour? No reason why. So, so I'm trying to look at it to alleviate congestion on that corner. Where do we put that boat ramp? Off of that corner or over the corner?
I like that. I have a kind of had, we just do fewer boat ramps. And Hagens Code, plenty of land there.
Yeah.
And the feasibility study would, would give me some comfort that eventually permitting could be obtained or counted. We, if we could work to deal with the state, we'd have them help us leverage this project. And we wouldn't have to put out any money to buy the land, which means more of the pot free money to dig the rocks.
The feasibility study will tell you how much you have to spend.
How much you have to-
To get that channel out there, and permit, and, and all that would be in, in the plan. It would tell you, but I, I'm telling you, I've already had one engineer about it. He said the cost of going through that bay out there, and the time everybody gives you the permit is gonna be unreal. He said, the cost out there is just gonna be, but y'all, we got to come to us.
That, that, that are the Hudson's property. So, they're, they're not taken up, and they're not in residential areas, whichever one of the feasibility studies says. But you don't need a boat to support.
Well, obviously, what I, what I would suggest, and I think you're going down the right path, is those are the two obvious choices. One is a public partnership, and one is a private venture. So, if you were to put those two, I think those fit all the parameters of what our objective envisioned by the S T P. It's, it's unnecessary, I think, at this stage to grab all the, the, the various other projects when it's abundantly clear that these two are obvious choices, obvious candidates. And, you know, obviously, both of them have some purpose, but some of that would be flushed out with the feasibility study. And we'll see. Then, from a total project cost perspective, which one is the best value in the long run for what we're trying to achieve? And I think, I don't think we're wasting anybody's money. I don't think we're wasting anybody's time. Those are two legitimate locations that really embody the whole concept that's, that's discussed in the S T P.
And, and if you wanna throw that down the Dollar Street, it's a logical one.
Yeah, and Dollar Street is a logical one, and I, I looked, I was kind of going through these properties again in my mind last night. I was going on there this morning, and, um, Dollar Street has, the one I had, I think, that I see with this is the, the length of creek access to open water. That's, I've been training out there myself. But you, obviously, we'd have to deepen that creek line through that route. And it's about, I wanna say it was, um, three thousand feet, as a profile.
Oh, yeah, well, it's, it's, it is a half mile, half mile.
As a profile. So, that's not as frequent, but as profile. Ho, uh, high, not high profile, excuse me. Hagens Code, there is about two thousand feet of non, or very sparsely vegetated sand flash in front of Hagens Code.
Where is that now?
This is, this is Hagens Code.
That's, that's good.
That gets you almost, uh, parallel with, um, Fun Point, which just beyond Fun Point is where we start seeing, or I start seeing, that's enough that the S T P envisions, uh, minus three million dollar water, that's four of the dredging. Um, so, you're getting closer to that as you go further out.
Well, the feasibility study will show us all that.
Yes, they'll be back next year, next year.
Now, just, just see, uh, at, at, um, Hagens Code, we would, kind of wouldn't run into any problem, other than the cost. Which you gotta dig a boat, but, okay, where you put the ramp?
But it's a lot easier to dig a boat, like, aside from the potential for rock.
Well, yeah.
Obviously, that's a-
Rock, that's easy.
That's across our whole code line. But aside from the rock potential, it's gonna be a whole lot easier to dig it in grass, I mean, in sand than it is in grass.
You got it.
Okay, now that question, on Hagens Code, is there-
From the buyer and seller perspective is what I mean.
Is there a potential to expand parking area, huh?
Like three hundred acres.
So, we could have all, almost unlimited parking?
My guess is that the state authority would be excited if we were to develop that property for the sort of purpose.
Well, that, that to me would be our number one.
That's it.
I, I just agree, and that it's, and I, and I think it's smart to put in both of them, that if it gets to the point that there, one has more issues that are, um, intractable versus the other, we have two very, very good options.
Okay, now, I wanna ask one other question, and I, and it, the only reason I'm asking this question is the loading property, it's before you get Keen Beach, what, and I don't know about the property, I have no idea about the property, but if it was the good one, it was the traffic that would be going around through that area to get to Hagens Code, is it one fit? What's your opinion on that property?
Water access is very much akin. It's not on the same length of scale as, uh, Dollar Street, but it still has, um, tight creek access to it. Um, it's going to-
Yeah, you'd have to get three thousand foot, get four, foot of water, let's say.
It, 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 it's a verb, um, obviously.
Okay, okay.
It's pretty, it's pretty, it's so small, and you have to be outside and get a little-
We got less than three acres there to park on.
Oh, okay.
And a land, I'm gonna tell you that.
Okay, then that's, forget that.
I'm saying, when you go to get the permit to build a channel out there, Hagens Code would be the best permit-minded site because you dealing with the state, the state and the Corps of Engineers weren't gonna give you the permit. We have their blessings part in safety.
Right.
Right?
Absolutely.
And I mean, and the permit part, I feel that permit, when you, when it says the betterment of the general public, there's no fault. And the Corps of Engineers, they, they, they lean, they lean on their, pitch for a private enterprise, so a lot harder to get a permit than it is for, you know, combined with the general public. Take, if, to build, like you say, to build something for the future, a deep water channel with plenty of parking and plenty of room to do things, Hagens Code is no brainer to me. That's just, you know, you, you, you could get a nice camp dug all the way out, had rock pile on one side, and that's kind of more.
That's the expression I'm getting.
I mean, that, that, that's a good study right there, telling you the whole story about that.
The, the only discrepancy I have with Hagan's Code is, is different than the, the Hagan project. We go, where'd it go? How did that, could it work out? Um, that road actually in there, we're gonna have to rebuild that road. We're gonna have to widen it up and, and support that road.
But I think if you're gonna, if you're gonna part of this, money, fuck, pretty money, I think.
I think we're gonna have.
Yeah, I think it's rather than have.
But, but that being said- But that being said now, you just have to keep in mind that you don't have construction dollars available until, uh, another twelve years or so, so, but I believe that we can either app them as a key amendment or whatever we have to do to move those dollars forward and switch them over from, tip them from, um, acquisitions to construction. But if that's not an automatic, we'll have to work with it on a personal map. But I don't think that's an issue.
And, and I would say that if we go through the exercise of the feasibility studies, and we see that both, either one of those properties have certain problems, then we use that as justification to say,
Absolutely.
Look, we don't need eleven million dollars to buy property, and only seven hundred thousand constructed. Let's roll whatever we don't need to acquire, which, if a public property offers zero, let's roll that into construction and let's build. A non-meat amount, so we let go of the truth of everything.
Well, you know, with the intention of eventually down the road attaching it, uh, through Department of Defense, Coast Guard, F W P, things like that may arise in the future where we can attach that type of, so if we do that type of facility and we have that availability, we can down the road.
I expect F W P would love it.
Absolutely. Anytime they can see that attached.
If it's a temporary, if it's a life extension there, you know, so there's a lot of candidates.
Adding this property is just a boat.
Well, we have acquisition dollars available in year two, so it's possible that we could, um, realign that in construction. And if, if it becomes a reality, we may be able to have construction dollars available due to the light. So, don't we first have to confirm with the state about our intentions, or have we already done that?
We have. Okay. We, we received a letter from S T P regarding that.
There's something on the chart before you, so. The, that letter said that if we went the route of possible co-location, they would appreciate being involved in the process.
They would, oh, okay, yeah.
So, now, we, so I, we just go ahead and-
I agree.
And, and talk with them. Now, one of the things that, uh, I hate, I hate to mention it, but I think we have to, and that's, we have, uh, something proposed, uh, we do have a willing seller. Um, Dr. Hudson has approached me and I, so the comrades, he would like the board to consider, um, entering into an agreement with he and his wife, where, um, they would, um, know the price that I am not allowed to disclose yet. Um, he is asking for, I believe, twenty percent down. And then he would actually, um, he would actually finance the remainder over, I think, a four-year period at zero percent interest. Um, now, my, my concern with that is that it does not follow our, our S T P at all. And I believe that there is a chance that reimbursement could be at risk. Um, but I also, um, will communicate that he, um, feels the need to offer his property for sale very quickly um, due to some private concerns he has, and, um, very much wants the board to consider, um, an offer. Here's where I am coming. I'm not with the uncertainty. We don't have anything totally guaranteed, but with the uncertainty and the fact that we have a governor now that can throw all of us off tomorrow, or the president or tonight.
And he's, and he's in our members.
And, and, um, and, and so, I, I don't wanna be, uh, my job taken away from me. And because if a county were, were to commit to something like this with our resources where they are now, I would be very, very uncomfortable doing that. So, I, 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 I feel for him, I like him, I have no problem with him. But from a business standpoint, and for what's best for our community financially, I for one would have to vote against that.
I'd vote against that.
I'd vote against that.
For ten percent.
And, uh, I, I think that it would be, uh, a bad decision. For this board to do the two, our limited contingency fund, to do this for one property owner and then fifteen more here. And would be lined up at the door. You did it for him, I want my money, or it's due now. We possibly don't know what that property is presented as that.
Correct.
Don't think Henry London would be up here with this, and, 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 uh, everybody in that list would be, just want enough, want their money.
Yeah, it's pretty much a consensus then. Commissioner, Dan, how do you feel about that?
Well, you all.
Okay, then that's not a big deal.
Absolutely.
Well, I think we need to answer our specific risks part. Right in the behind is that we don't have a study in power to touch.
Correct.
We don't know.
And you follow the process, just as we, if we, and we decide that's one of the ones we're gonna do. If you have the ability to study on, let it, and follow the process.
Well, when I used to come out with, that's great from the representatives of the Dawson's Board in the mouth, they said, and vote, and, I mean, if you recall, they did let us know in board meetings that if we, if we did make the decision, or if y'all made the decision to step out for property ahead of time, that they could not guarantee reimbursement. See, that's the reason for us, if he, you know, if he finds a buyer, there's something between now and then, then good for him.
That is.
Good for him.
There's, there's no chance you can, if the feasibility study is not even like, you dig nothing, there it is, what? You know, when they go to look at that, red field, grass out in front of that place there.
The grass, the, the back.
I mean, that's red field, and that area, they use it under in front of you, that.
Well, now, that property may be a good candidate for a F R D A, um, grant, or an S T P grant. Um, there are other grant programs that, that may, that may be a, a perfect, I mean, I think it's a good property for, for the store act funding. But, I mean, it's possible there are other grant opportunities available to that. Um, and I can stress our, our rent director to do some research if the board is interested in that. If you-
Well, what, now, it's a proposition of that property.
To do what with?
To, to purchase that property, using another, using another grant program.
If you do what with?
That I understand.
To, to do any kind of further project, if you come down the line of that, which is, I don't-
You know, and just like Jim said, you don't know if you're gonna be able to-
You don't know if you do anything there or not, you know, 'cause you get a feasibility study done. And if he, if he done has feasibility study done, that would be fine. He could say, here it is, you know, you can start a canal, you know.
I think he feels like he's done his own feasibility study.
He's done one?
Oh, yeah.
He's done, right.
Which, which way would you, is?
Yeah.
I mean, you can't done a large amount of research, it's a beautiful piece of property.
Oh, yeah, but, but, but we have a, we have a lot of property, you know, and, and, I'd rather have a lot of island than I would his property.
That's a good one.
I would rather be talking to him than that.
Okay, let's move forward then, uh, Heather, what else you wanna say?
I appreciate the board being, um, amenable to following data. And around that to kind of create a, an atmosphere of, um, impartiality. It's kind of an easy way to make a decision without, without you promoting subjectivity, just, uh, progression.
No, it's something to all of us, and we'll move along.
All right.
I'd rather, uh, develop one, not, cause my hall boat ramp with a face and a channel in a non-residential area than drill out four or five little.
That's right.
Places in that place far, making people mad. I would.
I mean.
I would, I would like to see a project come in the future where the state agencies would be more than glad to go into a project. Okay, 'cause I would like them to type in the department that you, we need to cook our fish.
Yeah, I thought it would say, put Springwater on the list, but that's.
Yeah.
Now, that, that, that way, there's a lot of parking there. There's a world of people in our vision today, I guarantee parking lots full and it's people that's gonna bring money into that again. Most of them call me, Phil, Phil and, and I know all that stuff.
One, one major one and Springwater.
Well, now, with the Firdapp, um, perhaps it was Springwater, 'cause I heard that's real good. Maybe it's possible that, well, that's.
Because that property would, would that, that.
That's a trap, that's a trap. That's a trap, 'cause one more thing on that, Kenneth, Kenneth, if we did a, a beautiful site there, Hagan Cove, could we get there at our heat and big foot ramp at that curve, that dog day where all the traffic is? And we, could we cut right there to Cone Store and cut around behind our nice facility there and hit Seadrine Road without putting all that traffic into that curve right there in the parking lot? And then we could go away with the road right there and have that part of the parking for the heat and big canal.
We have looked at the concept of, of bypass that kind of circumvents those on the north side of the, the heat and property.
Right.
There are a lot of environmental sensitive areas up through there, because, I mean, usually you know as well as I do when it rains, there's sheets of water that come through there. Yes, that's a possibility, um, you know, if you were to try to maybe turn around the proximity to I House or something and head to East Worth where you kind of tie back into Jody Gray and then come back to, um, the beach roads. It is a possibility, um.
For safety aspect, they would be real helpful with it some, and I believe.
Well, we're looking at, you guys don't know it yet, but, you know, D S D and, and I are looking at, um, various places along Beach Road for safety improvements. Um, that'll be coming to you in the near future to start seeing some of that. And the intersection at Keaton Beach and Beach Road is one of the ones that we're looking at to, um, make some improvements there. I try to deal with high-risk roadways, but the predominance of accidents reports that are in that area are all in the parking lot. They're not, it's not on the roadway as well. So it's, D S D is reluctant to give you funds to improve or address the roadways when you don't really have anything to substantiate that you need to do this, other than congestion during your smaller scholarship.
But if we were to do what the law says to, to do and stop all them people from barking down the flat, that highway with all them kids getting out and running the highway, if we would stop this year when Scott State gets there, say, nobody can park on this highway.
Law enforcement.
The law enforcement can say, nobody park on this ditch on this, it's illegal to park there without all them young men going out and treating all of it.
Well, they can park them, they drive all the way from mile to mile to get there, and there's nowhere.
Right, but I understand that, 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 but if you did that, that would give us the arms to say, to say, or the safety issue, we need to, we need to put that road around behind our park there.
Well, I was gonna talk to Ryan.
I just, I, I child ain't never known it there yet and it's, we're real lucky at it.
Well, I'm, I'm, I have wondered that for many years, sitting there watching that.
I, I mean.
Amazing how nobody's been killed on.
If that road there was part of that parking lot within the boat ramp.
Right, now, if you, for instance, Keaton Beach Boat Ranch is your focal point, okay? And you're traveling, coming in to visit. And if you build a south alleviation and a north alleviation, which would be, south would be Hagan Cove, you would have a boat ramp south, and then north would be considered your Springwater, okay? That is gonna alleviate congestion from focal point. I think you have a destination before and then you have a destination after. So say, for instance, people that are coming in from north heading south have a chance to get Springwater before Keaton Beach. Same thing if the people were coming from south and north, they would get the Hagan Cove or whenever, wherever we decide to put that one in. South, and that would alleviate the traffic going into Keaton Beach 'cause you have two destinations that are cutting that main destination off, not trying to say cut it off. Um, you, you have a focal point before you get to that one. So if you build one south of the boat ramp, the existing boat ramp, and you build one somewhere north, which would be the Springwater area, that would alleviate the traffic and the congestion 'cause you have a different focal point, bigger destination point. And, and, and I, I've looked at that years ago. Has something else been built in that area? It wouldn't even make it to that corner on Keaton Beach, it would go somewhere.
I would agree with you if they were more in the vicinity of Keaton Beach. Somewhere north. But to go, I, I, I spent quite a bit of time, um, going in and out of Springwater, um, we were rebuilding the, the boat racks last year. And you, up until the point that you get past the house, which is where we established, or tried to establish the no wakes zone, you have to be very much aware of where you are driving your boat because that is a very, very prominent rock bottom. I don't know that, um, and, and I agree with you, there probably are a part and multiple people that say it. And I actually had one of the guys that sprung there guide me out the first time until I could remember the route. But I, I don't think that that's gonna garnish a lot of the attraction of people that end up at Keaton Beach. Like if Keaton Beach will, but what I would suggest is rather that if you were to have the one that is between our two, you know, Keaton here and Keaton Hacey here and we swap one in the middle, whether, in that vicinity of Hagan Cove or Hudson B one, I think that sees the same objective. The area in which Gossens is predominant, that's right in the middle. And I think what you're gonna have is when you have a nicer facility that doesn't have that channel, that one-hour channel wait, I think you're gonna see the most people try to go to this facility because they don't wanna put up the headache at Keaton Beach, coming in and out or waiting to get in and out.
And we won't tell until we get there. We, we won't know that until we get to that point. Until that structure's built, we're not gonna actually see or notice whether it influxes or it, or.
I would be shocked if we're gonna mount after one season, just start putting influx of people at that middle ramp away from, because the worst gonna be, if you wanna get out of that channel on that headache where all those people are coming in mass, go down here, 'cause there's a whole lot nicer and you're right on the water.
Yeah, we have, what, how about this? Is there, I know this sounds far out, but I'm not crazy. Somewhere is.
My head's definitely.
Somewhere is safe. Could we make a road, a good paved road from Salem to the Beach Road? That would bypass all of Keaton Beach, it would put you out there, turn left and go on to Hagan Cove.
Which street, which?
Well, okay, so now you're saying that come all the way down nineteen.
Yeah.
And then turn and go across Sixth Street.
You've only got from the Beach Road to there, you only got ten minutes, right?
But that's a, that's a.
It's, it's, uh.
It's farther, it's farther than you think. 'Cause most people coming from Gainesville comes up here, stops, comes sixteen heads, you know.
It's an easier route to hit Keaton Hacey and come around than it would be to go all the way up to Sixth Street.
Well, the Georgia people, lots of Georgia people come, so that's not a good idea then. It just don't.
I think it's probably on the board, Maggie too, with that Henry fourteen project. I think it probably is that kind of all.
Oh, I forget what I said.
Don't think it would work.
I, I used to go through there a lot 'cause my in-laws were just like.
I was proud of that Dr. Pruitt, he'd offer that boat ramp property that he wants, was gonna develop and give it to us near Dick. But I said, don't tell out of there. That was probably ranked pretty high, they stopped offering.
There's a piece of property at Dickel Beach, twenty something acres there on the right before we get to Dickel Beach. When you turn and drop right there down to the bridge.
Yeah.
There's a piece of property right there, twenty something acres, and it's kind of been permitted over five acres up high and dry. You could put parking on many times. If you was gonna dig another channel, you'd have to dig a channel. But digging channels to Dickel Beach is a half cost digging one, digging two or anywhere up in, in the channel.
It's about half the cost?
About half the cost, that's what they do there.
Why, and who owns?
Uh, why? Why? Because when the Corps of Engineers did their, the old diners told me when they done their course and sit down the coast and then fix and build that crash, but by Dickel Beach, that was the only place on the old coast that they didn't run into rock, that fall under the sink. From, I'm talking about the Also River, the San Antonio River, they said they riddled every bit of it. And Dickel Beach is where the Corps of Engineers built that channel out there, it's probably, that was a crash, that place, the airbase. I mean, airbase out here where they had, they had a little pilot sign and they filled all the targets out from Dickel Beach. The big grassy and all that area, they had targets out there and had crash crews. They could come and go low tide. They had a, about a six-foot that low tide channel there go at one time.
Who owns that?
Yeah, so, look, country, I told him the property years ago, he got twenty-one acres right there. And, and what he want for it, eight fifty, I think.
Eight million fifty, huh? Eight and eight?
No, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Steve Flynn is the name, he, he, he lived up in Indiana. But Steve, uh, I told him property years ago and, uh, he, he offered that piece of property, like five fifty to start with when he went up that time. I talked to him, he comes up here about once a year and he'll call me and him meet me out of the road there and we leave. He told me that, I said, he, he said, I, he's the kind of person, good giver of property. I said, why don't you go to the, to the county? He said, well, that's kind of, that's kind of strong, you know, but, uh, he said, I'd love to settle to the county, if they want me to dig a channel out, they got plenty, plenty in there to do it on, you know. And, uh, and we had it on the list, partly, didn't we? Uh, Steve Flynn, it's not on this list.
That doesn't sound like.
It wasn't on, uh, the, the.
The original list.
Twenty-seven team list, 'cause I used to ever talk to him.
But we had it on the list one time. I know Steve Flynn, um, um, the, um, and, I mean, uh, the realtor brought it up here, uh.
And I was.
Well, how'd it get took off?
I don't know, I don't know why.
That's if we can get down, it's about to do the feet building study on, you know, you know.
Now, we gotta go from one to more?
Well.
Well, I'm thinking right now that your, your list is real surprise of two.
And people, and people, Dickel Beach is gonna be just like Seadrine Island there. They do not want nothing there.
That, that's.
But they, they run down the river though and, 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 you know, and, and, you know, when you say.
Ah.
Well, I don't.
Ah, we got, we got, we got.
What do you want?
Auction out of there.
Oh, yeah. And, and honestly, the, the, the canal needs dredging first, but I'd hate to cut them commercial people out at Keaton Beach to do their, and they do it first, for people making a living out of that channel.
Well, there's a reason that that was first, it's public and then private, nothing like that.
Right.
All right, we got enough, two, two boat ramps. I would tickle it, we could come in and look, and that's Dr.
Okay, well.
You could have a fantastic facility.
Hagan Cove and Dr. Hudson's property.
Hagan Cove and, uh, Dollar Creek, which was.
Hagan Cove.
Hagan Cove and Springwater, oh, and Springwater.
That's further down on the list. I mean, do we need to, do we need a cutoff on? Because that's, the Springwater property was put at number seven, number eight?
Number seven.
Sure.
Now, it's number seven.
Number seven.
I guess my question is.
It's all the one today.
Yeah. It.
Yeah, I was, it's been mega, and plus you got the auction.
Right.
I think that's a Firdapp front.
But there's a bunch of people that are out of Springwater and all them people that live there goes out and all them Georgia people starting to go out.
But what could you, I could use, since, since, for, you know, to buy that too, or whatever we need. And then, right, the grand, the boat ramp.
So my question would be, um, okay, two questions. Do we need to publish and have a deadline for any additional properties to be put on the list? And then after that, does the board need to approve? I'm, I'm not publishing nothing or going any further. We've had this list, it's been plenty of time, let's not open up that channel, or let's, let's close it right now. It, it.
Please, 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 close it.
You want to pay with permission or not?
Yeah.
You don't want to see it on there that got a teaser access to the canal and build, I mean, teaser to build one there, I mean.
If you don't close it now, it'd be a hundred years before we build it.
Uh, it would take, it'd take five, this, I mean, he could say, it would take five, six years to have it come out, or do any of them.
So we need to, let's close it.
Let's, let's close it and let's do some feasibility study.
Do you want to stick with the list of the board of directors into two thousand seventeen?
Add no more to it.
Right.
That's just, if we got, now you're gonna do a feasibility study on which one now, let's get that straight.
Well, I think, like, we need some direct training from the board and I don't know if this need, if we need to close this and do this right now. And I think it's gonna consent us to go ahead and move forward with, um, uh, Hagan Cove, number one, Dr. Hudson's, uh, property, number two. And we'll need feasibility studies, we'll need an agreement that the state's gonna, you know, indeed, let us do this and, um, move from there, is that, am I correct, board?
I thought we, we were gonna put all our eggs in, in, in Hagan Cove if we're gonna do a something, crack, you know, do a channel. We don't, we could do a feasibility study on, see which one of them.
If one of them comes in the best.
Which one comes in the best, uh.
Yeah, I thought that's what we were doing. He was, he was putting two options there, but we're only gonna pick one of those.
You don't, you don't, right, and that's.
We don't know. Well, we're gonna let the feasibility study determine, watch if that's value or not.
Okay, so, so.
And that's what, that's gonna be our big boat ramp, one of.
Being not.
They go out from one of the other little, that would cut a lot of heat off, like Sean said, that cut a lot of heat off Keaton Beach, if you had that. But it'd be, year's coming, it'll take a while to get it.
The board doesn't have any problem with Hagan Cove, 'cause I remember several years ago, state tried to give that to the county.
Really? I think that's, if we did that.
A lot of their parks.
That's the way to go, right there. Go there and rent it up there.
I like Hagan Cove, three hundred acres.
Yeah.
Same, same partnership with that on the head, so that's the one that.
Yeah, I wouldn't want the state to give that to us until I do the fact.
Right.
If I'd love to have him beside me when I'm approaching.
No, I, no, I.
When you're probably, you need any of your box, uh, for sure.
We need a box for you.
Kenneth, you wanna let us just go with Hagan Cove or you wanna do Hagan then?
I think it's smarter to put both of them there.
'Cause one of them.
Right. Feasibility, do you wanna do a, a feasibility study on Springwater, I mean.
Do we need that, that's a small part?
If you're a very big of a big facility, then.
Well, we got two.
Doesn't need a brander.
For me, we've got two exceptions, a big facility and then becomes a geographic need, you don't have a boat ramp between Inconveni and Keaton Beach, a public. This one is could be a smaller, lack of scale, the venue wouldn't be to put in a bigger. And if we get a property, then I think we could get a Firdapp ramp if we didn't have no money, to put in another two.
Two ramps, very, very easy, just one ramp there now.
And there were not no plan of the drainage.
Right, right.
Now, and it's Springwater, you take a chance.
The people that go to Springwater are not expecting no drainage and the people that live on Springwater don't want the forty mile an hour running, they, they want, they want.
They waste that five, two layers.
What's the value of us getting that if we're not gonna do any kind of drainage or anything else with two acres? What's the value for the county to always just take it off the tax hall?
Well, the, the value is, is it would be a convenient place to provide access to that geographical area of the Gulf, of people that use. And there are a lot of people that go to Springwater to go in there and go out and go in it.
Do they, you have to pay a, uh, fee to go out there?
For what?
Is it not?
Feet.
Yes, by all them.
Is it not?
'Cause that's, that's existing most of.
Uh, there is, they, Springwater, Jim, just up above there, there is a, a public facility. You pay five dollars to put in, you put in, Fred Morgan's got a box there, five dollars. And that's everybody pays to put it in.
There, there, there's a motel and, um, that's a big.
There's a, they have fishing grounds.
Exactly.
Now, now Fred Morgan owns the property or get on.
Something worth all that.
He's trying to sell that property, he said, evidently he does not see this public underground as much of a threat to his business. Is that? That, that's illegal, the man told me that on business, he said, he loves to see a public boat ramp where more people would come for his business, so we're really helping him. And, and we, like you said, that's actually, if you don't hardly have, a lot of people won't know about, you know. A lot of people from Perry, everybody down Springwater Road uses that ramp. There's actually three ramps there, some places like Denny's, there are people just say that their neighbors put in that all up and down there on the road, for boat ramp. A lot of people from Perry, everybody down from where you used to that ramp, there's actually three ramps there, from places like Engie, there are people just say that their neighbors put in, and all the down there on the road, for boat ramp. But it's not that far out of Frank Warren after the Gulf anyway, and you get past that last horse before you can go, you know?
That's our favorite, favorite place, you know, he was on low ramp too many years ago, and had this, his favorite place, he was never able to
It's, it's, really, really good, from the trout between Amman Beach and Frank Warren, over to Rock Island, it really is a bad trout fish, right today, I imagine.
Okay, well, I wonder which, which, uh, if we say, if this is the pure laws at Frank Warren, will our budget, uh, support maintaining another area? Number one question, number two, if we did get the, uh, Hagan's Cove, would the state help us maintain that, or would it all be ours also?
I would say if they enter a lease agreement with us, they would be very happy to have Taylor County as an maintenance office, unless that's something that we could negotiate with them. But my, I don't know that they would, I don't know, I mean, we, we would have to explore that, um
We could possibly have two more boat ramps to maintain this secure.
Right, and, and, back to that, this is, this is funny, that I am a little concerned that if the board's consensus is that we follow this list, and we go down the list of the properties, if we take one and two, and then we jump down to number seven, that's just a little, that's difficult to explain to the public. When, if we say we use the system, but then we
Bear from the system.
We bear from the system, that's hard to explain.
But if they have a boat ramp, maybe you could say, well, y'all don't want to have a boat ramp, and people can go put in at Frank Warren today.
And I think that needs to be part of the criteria, and that there's a logical reason for putting them up to the top.
I think so.
And I don't
Well, I thought y'all saying that with Frank Warren, you were going to look at the offshore deal of bird app, to help with that facility.
Which means we would not
You would need to save in your progress.
Or, so we would not do it, we know you said, that's
Go ahead, okay, that works for me.
What, what needs to be done at Frank Warren?
Uh?
What needs to be done at Frank Warren, you're looking
Nothing, you go there and put in the data.
Well, you need to expand more parking?
Yeah, you could, you could fill in more parking there, you, two acres, you clear up
That's all my, that's all I really see there.
It's already one of the old ramps there, it's, it's a ramp, very, very
That, that's a business.
No, there's another old ramp right at the end of the road, where you can, big camp's around here.
Right, but there's cable problem.
Yeah, take the cable down, and then you can do
That's one of the, that's one, the, the ramp don't belong to the big camp, it belongs to Fred Morgan.
When you come in the road where the little circle is
Right.
There is one that's got cable problem.
Well, it's got a ramp on its side.
And then the, what I thought you referred to was the concrete, and the, the
That's the one Fred owns.
But I, I had to talk to those people to tell them what I was doing, to
They won't act like, they own, they split the money with Fred on it, because they, they keep up the cable and all that kind of stuff, Fred act on those boats and ramps.
Okay, and we're not reading any Why don't we say that we would pursue Frank Warren with bird app, even out of this equation, and not worry about twenty-five thousand dollar, uh, uh, feasibility study, and let's pursue the two that's recommended.
So, what I can do is I can instruct our direct directors to be working part-time specifically for these, this project, and another one, to work on grant applications for feasibility studies for Hagan's Cove, and, well, you know, we're still not all in the list.
And
But then, can we submit applications for all three?
I, I would say that if, if we're really, and that's why I started this place, if our focus is to put in a facility, Hagan's Cove
A facility?
Yeah.
A, nah.
Then of the two properties that are available between Hagan's Cove and Dollar Creek, Hagan's Cove is much more obvious choice.
Yeah.
I see.
If we want to
It's a little bit far out of the county area.
Yes, sir, and if we want to look beyond that restricted access to the creek lines, then a peasant's property is the next logical choice to, to allow for a regional type facility.
You're gonna fix the next one.
Sure. And now, it's pretty darn, it's a first, that's a little boat rent thing, right?
It does, and like I said, I have spent hours out there waiting for the water channel.
All right, we got a plan.
So, then, we'll bring a grant application back to the board, or whatever we have to do, for those two properties, we have an end of March deadline, to submit those to the Gulf Consortium, and then we'll see how it takes out. And my suggestion would be, if we're not, if we don't like the results, uh, of this season, we'll go to the next on the list.
You don't wanna, you don't wanna hook bird on on this, Tom?
No.
It's just logistically, it, it, it would be tough for maneuvering, um, on that, on that piece of property.
A what?
It'd be tough for maneuvering, pulling in, launching, parking, retrieving, it's a very small peninsula.
Okay, I've been there, looked at it, like, it, it is small, but then again, a lot of people use it too.
No, no doubt, I know people that do, and, uh
That's funny, I mean, we have plenty of time, this is just the first step, and we know we're going to have to submit individual grant applications for every project. So, if this is the way you want to define our, our marketing orders, then we can start at the top of the list, and, but we can't, we don't need to take action immediately after we receive a feasibility study necessarily. Then at that point, then it would be property appraisal, and then after those two milestones, then we can look at whether or not we need to add front end to the ECP, or if you want to move forward with construction or acquisitions, or whatever the board would like to do.
That's funny, ahead following our ECP. And you're gonna, you're gonna see, Jim, if, if we could use, say, for instance, if it's Hagan's Cove, and that's what, then you're gonna, uh, work on seeing if we can get the acquisition money to go toward construction, and that
Now, that's what, I mean, leading into my question, it, it's probably fifteen million dollars.
Twelve point six.
Twelve point six. And it's dribbled in over eighteen year period.
Next, it's, uh, thirteen forty, it's on the
But anyway, point is, point is, you could very easily consume all that money on one big nice facility, the dredge. You can't, you can't, I mean, so I think that it would be smart to go back to Hagan's Cove, one big cross, uh
Right.
I had a hundred percent myself, because that, that's, that's your, that's you kind of, a year, a year
Well, and I'm already envisioning that, you know, Keaton's a two lane ramp, King Hattie is a three lane ramp, this one I'm
Would be a five.
Do a four, at least
Four lane ramp, now, I'm thinking, you, my three acre toilet can turn around.
I'm, I'm looking at people that are, that are traveling out there on the boats, okay? About seven years ago, when I worked at the Marina, we had some people in Spain that wanted to come in here, and we had a sixty foot dock, and they wanted to come in here, they're traveling around the world. Now, they didn't speak in English, so they were over the radio, and I had to grab the radio, and I spoke Spanish to the guys, and I had, they were asking me how to get in here, and what type of water is off. So I asked them, what type of depth did it need to get in here, and he said, I need four foot water off. Well, how, how is it sealed, he said, well, I don't want a nineteen foot seal, oh, I don't want a nineteen foot seal, but, but sure, you're not gonna get in here.
Yeah.
But you're gonna get in, you're gonna get in, but you'll never leave.
Good, that's, good, you know, you know, but I, 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 I just told them, you know, you stay out there thirty miles, and they all, well, where y'all are heading from here?
Well, we wanted to stay here for a week, just see what it's about. Because they're talking about King Hattie and the beach all the way in, and
And you go up there and see how deep it is, doesn't it?
I doubt it, I doubt it, I doubt it, but
Well, that's why I'm always funny to see if you come in and say, yeah, they use the anchor out there past the burr, because they had people on there.
And then they had to take a smaller boat and get on it.
Why, why, I believe something of that magnitude where you're upping one, two, the three, or four boat ramps. And we put in a type of channel where we have a coast guard station, that's what we need to catch it. So when you have this international money that's traveling right behind us, and you've got insurance right behind us, God knows what they would invest in here. So if we can facilitate that type of activity, where people are circumcised, made of, from, by waterways, we had another guy that was doing a documentary for, uh, Discovery Channel, who was in a kayak, all the way from Seattle, Washington. Kayak all the way around South America, come up to the Gulf, and stop at one meeting. I like that, to be able to facilitate the matter of a different type of, and then just a twenty foot boat, you know, we want to bring in people that are out there on the Gulf, and want to facilitate, so it's, he's gonna hear the same money here, why not?
Yesterday, um, I was at the beach doing some painting, and, um, when I got ready to go, I went down to Hodgins Park, because the neighbor had said that, did I see this homeless woman, person out on the bridge, that had, that looked very homeless, and they didn't recognize them, so And they were headed to Hodgins Park, so I thought, well, I'll just ride down here and see if I see this person, and I didn't, but as I made up trouble back there, there was a camper back there from British Columbia. And then there was another car from out of state, I couldn't see the state, but I knew it was John Flotec.
There is, there is a couple that actually lived there, uh, they got a big Mercedes type truck, looks like a military truck, and they're from Germany, and they come down here once a year, all the way to Germany, they load the truck up, get on the boat, ship it over here, and then they drive from Jacksonville to Los Angeles. And that I can trip once a year, and once a year, these German boats stand down in there. So, we're becoming an international destination, slowly, but surely, we are, we definitely are.
I had runners all the way from New York, coming out here, everyone from St. Dickle Beach.
On the beach, that meant Germans?
All over the country.
South African, Portuguese, there's all kinds of different people coming in here.
Yeah, there's a lot of people come to this country, and then they run a vehicle, and they go all around coast line, all the way around the country.
Oh, yeah.
Looking at the coast line, and then they go back for the country.
Well, I was, I was gonna say, uh, Commissioner Chris, would you like to say, Ray?
Yes, ma'am. Well, thanks for the food, the bubbles, things, and the earth, that's about what I'm trying to do, and that
Thank you.
All right, I'm set. Uh, very good meeting you so far, Mr. Commissioner. Oh, yeah. I like that four or five boat ramp, if, if, I was, I was, the semi, the semi got
Uh-huh.
Oh, good, with the lead pole, they, they go, a six foot boat engine, they're two miles
Yeah, we did one, we got, we got all five, so, yeah, all the
I'm sleeping all night, and, and now they're waiting for them to try
Yeah.
And what's the other difficulty for that are, that we're
Yeah, I would have been
I get what you're saying, for, we're digging, it's a stage similar, it's like, yeah, that's right.
And we're all working
Talking about that counter and the other
Hmm.
We are.
Uh, name, I didn't
Well, uh, thank you, and, and once you think Insertment, man.
At least we're willing to claim it, though.
All right.
I want that, I want that type of
How you doing for that?
All right, I thought that was
I had knee hurt last week, I'm going to sit right now, but I'm getting better all the time.
Okay.
When they do, replace
They nowadays, they trim the cord, you know, like, over the years, twist it, cause it hurts, and, and, it's just time to do it, you know? I've been rough on this dickhead here.
Yeah.
I'm footballing, I don't know, but talking a lot of, jumping on dog walk now, you know, I quit that.
Yeah, I, I have to
I keep, you know, all, he's through running, I, I, I'm tired on my own, now, I'm, I'm tired on my own, but I finally get that off my I came out, I'm so old, but, but, but
Five minutes. I got, I'm not moving quick, cause I've got, and I spent pretty good minutes. Okay, five, I see.
I can read, what do you think happened?
Yeah, five, and I had to get up, I think I had to get up, walk around me, but, the thing, best, for a minute, two.
We'll be some of those, uh, Fox News or whatever's happening, and throw them up, phone them, just check the sheet, and if I get that powder up in fifteen minutes, and I'll lay there and get rest, and then, and then we'll, uh, have a bite to eat about dark, and watch, at our house, our channel six, there is Jeffrey, and we're, we're watching Jeffery. And then after that, Betty has her turn, she watches, and say, Dr. Poe, Law and Order, both these old, uh, people renovate the old houses and
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And, um, then we keep it through, watch an hour, two of that, and that's all, pretty tight, watch the news.
My wife watches the news when I come home, and she has a list, what we need to do to the house, uh, yeah.
Man, they really, they still have a lot of
I just wanted to watch, well, you know, the, the children go to bed at, at eight thirty, I mean, I'm real strict about that, and last night, the children went to bed at eight thirty, and I had just got to washing all those dishes and cooking, and we went to bed at eight, everybody went to bed at eight thirty last night.
And we were in there by seven thirty.
I was in there about eight thirty, I don't know, man.
She was worn out, and I was like, dust that child in bed, she's crying, stop crying, oh, I was wrong, she gets tired, these little girls? They get tired, and they stroke their life, and it's just drama, and I'm like, I'm done, put her in bed, we're done, and she was sleeping five minutes. I'm glad you got girls, I had two girls, oh, my goodness, they're, 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 they're having that drama, my, uh
Let me, let me, we owe you for the sheep, so now, oh, I think, five dollars a sheep is fine, five?
I've already forgotten about that, I think a lot of other things.
Yeah, I've got it.
It's about a half a pole, you've got a steel, it's about that.
Here, I can tie one.
Well, here, can you make the five more?
All right, here's a
I'll take it
Check it out now.
I'm gonna take the train to back there, the southern.
A dollar fifty.
A dollar fifty?
Yeah, y'all been using it from I think I was telling, I was at Walmart, up in there the other day, checking on my wife, walked out there, there's a lobby down on the third, there's a fifty cent coat, and, and the lobby of Walmart telling that, all my cash. I thought, man, I forgot to tell that, and get me a
My grandma didn't drive a cab to get a haircut, she didn't have We could know it was up there, you remember him? There's a little barbershop, and he tended you, there was a knowledge up there. And you might know who I'm talking about.